I'll call the Board of Selectmen meeting to order for Monday, August 20th, 2018. We have just come out of executive session and have come back into regular session. So, as required by open meeting law, you're hereby informed that the town will be video and audio taping as well as live broadcasting this public meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience who plans to video or audiotape this meeting must notify the chairman prior to the start of the meeting. Hearing nobody, would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So, earlier, we were in executive concession to review some litigation matters discussion. An open session would have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the town, and the matters included different strategies in respect to collective bargaining. An open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town, which was the police chief evaluation, the water union, which we did not officially vote on, and approval of executive session minutes, which we did. So, moving on, the matters being handled by Town Council. Do you want to, are we going to go over each item, or are we going to wait for?
Are you talking about on the legal elements?
They're already on the agenda.
They're all on, so I don't have to.
Yeah, the only thing, you may want to, the chief, the chief did receive a favorable...
Sorry, did I not say that?
You just said that it was reviewed and...
And approved.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, so the chief did receive a favorable evaluation, and it was approved. Other than that, I think I covered all items. Okay. Weekly briefing? Hello, Larry.
Good evening, Madam Chairman and members of the board. For the record, I'm Larry Cole, the Harwich representative to the Cape and Vineyard Electric Co-op and chairman of the Harwich Energy Committee. Just a couple of brief items about CVEC, because Liz is going to talk to you later in an agenda item. Our annual meeting is coming up in September. We will have election of officers. There's a nominating committee working on getting a slate. There may be an item on the agenda about revising bylaws having to do with how a surplus, if CVEC ever had one, is distributed among the members. The way it's worded now is vague. The directors have asked that we be notified of the elections, the slate of officers, and this proposed, a proposed bylaw, if there is one, far enough in advance so we can think about it. And because it is the annual meeting, you're entitled to be represented by one of yourselves if you care to, because it's the town that's a member. With respect to the Harwich Energy Committee, we recently had a presentation with a representative from some power, which is in the business of building renewable energy, particularly solar installations, about the SMRT program, which the state is going to roll out at some point. There was tentatively a date of the end of April for announcing when the date of first acceptance of project proposals was going to be. That's now on a "to be determined." We're hearing December. There's a lot of information on the D O E R website about the program, and about how to apply, and conditions, and so on. What I just basically want to do was to bring to your attention the fact that there is such a program, and that the parcel that we designated for a large-scale solar array in order to meet one of the criteria for the Green Communities Program, as the handout that I gave you shows on the top, superimposed on that parcel is our enough photovoltaic panels to generate 1.9 megawatts. So, it's slightly less than 2 megawatt insulation would be possible out there. And the other thing I want to report is that the lease payments to the town, under best-case scenario, for a 20-year period, would be about $100,000. That's best case. That assumes that we get in the first block of ever source, and that's what the second page shows you, the declining block price. There are so many megawatts allocated for projects in each block, and when one block fills up, you move to the next one, and when you move to the next one, the price received by developers goes down. So, the best price in the state is ever source and Nantucket in the first round. So, the rest of the best-case scenario is that there be minimum site preparation work required by the developer. So, if we were to prepare the site, that would obviously be at some expense of the town. If the developer were to prepare the site, then the estimated lease payment per year would be less. So, there are lots of other details. There are, on that, that price page, there are adders and subtractors in the realm of fractions of a penny. And the, the adders, for example, would be if that were to, if the developer were to develop a solar community garden, that would add a little bit. On the other hand, because this is green land, green fields, although it's zone commercial industrial, it's called land category two, there's a .0005 dollar per acre reduction in the price, so fractions of a penny. That's really all I have to say about that, but try to answer questions. It behooves us to get acquainted with what the process is for getting a project approved, and, and because this would have to go out for competitive bid, Chris already knows that an RFP would be, have to be developed, and so on.
Okay. Take your word. Ed?
The size of the array, how does that compare to the production of our existing?
Well, it's, that picture shows a particular kind of panel that's used by SunPower...
Yep.
...installed, enough of them, given the, it's 8.87 acres, it utilizes most of it, except for one piece that's kind of out of line with things.
Yeah.
So, it's, he, the gentleman who drew, drew that knows what the capacity is of each panel, and how many were put in there.
Okay. But you indicated it's like 1.9 or 2...
Oh, that's a little less than half of the size that we have on our, on a landfill, which is four.
Okay.
Okay?
And Larry, just one other question. In terms of if we were to move forward with this, the goal would be to be in the first block, obviously, right?
I'm sorry.
The goal is to meet the block one, to get the best benefit for, in terms of evidence?
Well, the, the whole objective of it is, it's a source of revenue for the town.
Right.
And, but, the, the SMRT program is intended to increase the state's proportion of energy that comes from renewable sources.
Right. Okay. Any further discussion? Because we would obviously need to bring this back in terms of the RFP and all that. Does any other member of the board have a question?
I have just a general question, Larry, just basic understanding. You mentioned the, the prices would come back to the town. Is that fixed by the state? And then, what we go out for competitive bid is how much that would cost to build it? I'm trying to figure out the relationship.
Now, the program has been developed by the state in conjunction with the utilities, okay? These are the prices that have, they were, there was an auction process.
So, the state has set the price, and then what we compare to the bid is actually the construction of it?
This is what the developers get, those prices.
Okay.
Okay? That's what they get from the utilities for selling, okay, for generating that power. Okay?
Yeah.
What we would get was, is just the lease payments.
That's right. Okay.
And it, and, and what they're willing to pay depends upon what price they get, and then how much they have to spend on, on site preparation.
Okay. Ed? Did you have another question?
No.
Anybody else? Any other questions? Okay.
I, I think if the board's comfortable, you know, moving forward, obviously, this is part of Green Community. We had this area zoned as an as right, you know, as of right. I think it makes sense that we probably want to put together a RFP, and then we'll try to get something back to the board. It's been a long time since I've done one of these, so I'm not sure what timeline it will take to get us to get something back, but I'll try to get a better timeline for the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Larry.
Yes, ma'am.
Of experience, I most recently put this through maybe three to six months ago at the last community, so this is something that I've worked on fairly recently. I haven't worked with SunPower. I know that they've got a competitive advantage with their solar panels, but this will be competitively bid, so there, there'll be lots of different companies out there.
Okay. Thank you, Evan. Okay, moving on. Anybody else for weekly briefing? Okay, anybody for public comments and announcements? Good evening, Cindy. Oh, excuse me. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. My name is Tim Ethier. I live at 500 Old Chatham Road, actually, just across the border in South Dennis from Harwich. I moved to the house there in 2004. Wasn't long after I moved there that I became aware that there was a firing range nearby, a shooting range, at the Cape Cod Fishing Game Club on Depot Street in Harwich. It was, I guess I would say bothersome, but not constant back in the '04 to '010 roughly. Occasionally, someone would shoot there. It wasn't a fun thing, but it wasn't constant. The last few years, it's picked up dramatically. From what I understand, and I did speak with the Harwich Police, who were very polite and very careful to explain about this, I've called a number of times, it's a disturbance. It disturbs the peace of many, many houses throughout the area. From what I understand, that firing range, they have the right to fire firearms of all kinds, AR-15s, to shotguns, to handguns, from eight in the morning until eight at night, seven days a week, 365 days a year. This past couple of years, it's been almost continuous. It's like living in the middle of a war zone. The sound cascades across White's Pond, it makes it almost impossible to enjoy a cookout, to sit outside and read. I like to take my paddle boat out in the pond, and it's not a rural area. Obviously, Harwich and Dennis have developed a great deal over the last number of years. I know there's a new housing development going on in Harwich, right in the other gun range. It's become a major problem. I don't think it's fair. This isn't a Second Amendment issue, it's an issue of disturbance, constant gunfire, bam, 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 bam. Yesterday was absolutely atrocious. And again, there must be hundreds of homes within the range of that gun, gun range, probably 1,000 people or more who put up with it on a constant basis. I'm not sure if others have complained, but it's become almost impossible to be outside in my neighborhood. So, I'd ask that your board look into that. I know you have control of regulations. Ultimately, I'd love to see the range shut down. Most ranges in urban areas have been closed in recent years. I know the range was there before the houses were, that's one excuse I've heard. Let's face it, there were ranges on Manhattan Island at one point, before New York City developed. They shouldn't be allowed to shoot in areas that are that congested. At least the range should be enclosed if it's going to operate. There are enclosed ranges all over the state that, really, it stifles the sound. The shooters don't have to worry, because they wear very, very efficient, and I've seen them, and I've used them, actually, you know, really headphones or ear blocks that stifle the sound. I can't walk around with those in my yacht, I can't put them on my dog, I can't put them on my shoulder when they visit. So, again, I would ask that you look into the regulations for the range, 365 days a year, 12 hours a day isn't right. There should be a break for people. I'd like to see the range shut, a cover put over it at least to stifle the sound, maybe, or even if they alternated the days. And again, in finalizing, I'm guessing that most of the people who use that range aren't even from Harwich or Dennis. They're coming from all over the place, because there are very, very few outdoor ranges left at this point. So, I'd ask for you to look into that, as a board. I know the police can't do much about it, the regulations state that they can do that, 365 days a year, 12 hours a day, seven days a week. It's become a nightmare for me, and I think a lot of my neighbors as well. So, again, that's why I'm here tonight. I hope you'll check into that. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Chris, can we bring that back on as an agenda item at some...
Yeah, to be honest, I've been in the administration for four and a half years. I mean, I've heard off and on, but I've never had a direct request to look into it. I do believe that our police use, you know, some of those firing ranges, so it does serve a larger purpose beyond just Second Amendment and people using it. But certainly, let me get some details and see if we have any ability and what our ability is to regulate if possible.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know if I could, back and forth, I'm sorry, but I did speak with the police department, and for what they told me, they don't use that range. They use the other range in Harwich, that's a private range. I know the chief, I think I see him tonight, maybe he can back up.
I'll look into it, Madam Chair.
But I gotta appreciate, anything you could do to be...
We'll look into it.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Cindy?
Thank you, Cindy Williams, Executive Director of the Harwich Chamber. Just a couple of updates on some things that are happening in Harwich. We're winding down the Wednesday nights. We have three more, the 22nd and 29th, which will be six to nine, and we've added this year, due to some community businesses, et cetera, that wanted the first Wednesday to be the encore to summer. So, September 15th, five to eight will be that. Also, this fall is quite busy with September, between the Cranberry Festival Beach Day, September 8th, the Chambers Parade on September 9th, the Cranberry Festival, the 15th and 16th, and then the Chambers Business Expo, and the fireworks that we'll be doing once again this year on the 15th, all taking place at the Harwich Community Center. One of the big reasons why I'm here tonight is, our biggest event as a community is the Big Fix. The Housing Assistance Corporation was here back in the spring and awarded the town this wonderful way to assist our seniors, veterans, and disabled homeowners with cleanup landscaping and small home repair projects. As a town and a community, we need to come together and work together. You can have a team, you can fundraise, you can be hands-on, volunteer day-of, or a sponsor. What the Chamber has done with the Housing Assistance Corporation is develop a first giving page on our website. So, if a business or an individual would like to donate, can't get a team together, and doesn't have a large corporation, they can donate right on our website. More importantly, I want to reach out to the town and the community that is listening, but we have been, we're helping 17 Harwich homeowners. Each of you can make an impact, and you will be helping 17 homeowners, from a proud veteran who served in the Army in the 1950s, who has been in his Harwich home for 32 years, to a longtime Cape Codder that has lived in her Harwich home since 1981, and has several health issues, including being on oxygen 24 hours a day. These are just two examples of our wonderful Harwich neighbors we will all be helping. So, I wanted to bring that tonight to remind everyone that Saturday, September 22nd, eight to two, is Harwich's Big Fix. If anyone has any questions, they can certainly reach me at the Chamber.
Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you, Cindy.
Go ahead, Don.
Come back. Since we had a discussion, and our next meeting isn't until September 4th, is there anything else about the parade you would like to ask?
Yes, I would love to have many of our political figures in our parade this year, as it is an election year for many. So, if the board would like to be on a float, ride in a car, ride a bicycle, jog, would love to have you in the parade this year.
Afraid I'll be away.
Thank you, Cindy.
Forgetting about the jogging part.
You jogging?
I, I kind of want to support her for this. Years past, when we had the parade, forgetting about the political people who have primaries and stuff, this was kind of a Norman Rockwell moment. The selectman used to be in that parade, and it's town fathers and, you know, town mothers. The fact is that it had some value, because it was a small hometown event, and I'd love to be able to see us participate in some manner.
Okay, well, note taken. I will tell you that I have a Parents Weekend that weekend.
And I think the some manor just signed up.
Yeah.
Only if you carry me.
Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you.
And again, to Cindy's point on the Big Fix, we were lucky, Harwich was lucky to be selected, and as she said, we're, you know, helping 17 homeowners. So, donations on the Chamber website, if you can't participate or volunteer, join a team, if you are one individual or two individuals, or make your own team, because this is a really great event, and we've been, you know, very lucky to be selected. So, thank you, Cindy, for the update on the parade and fireworks and the Big Fix. Appreciate that. Okay, anybody else for public comments?
Comment? Following up on some of the comments about the Harwich Cranberry Festival, as I've announced earlier, the festival committee has been sponsoring a series of concerts at the Harwich Cultural Center all summer long on Thursday nights. This coming Thursday is our last concert for the summer. The group that's being, is performing is a group called Runa. They're a traditional Celtic band. They performed here in March and had a fabulous performance to sell out crowd then, and we'd encourage you to come Thursday night at 6 o'clock and hear them again. They're a wonderful group, and you'll be helping us out to finish off this, the summer season with a bang. Thank you.
Thanks, Ed. I did see them, they were fantastic, so I encourage people to go to that. I think we're ready to move on to the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, I'd like to present the consent agenda, move approval of the items thereon, including approval of the minutes of July 9th, 2018, regular meeting, accept the resignation...
Not that one.
No?
Hold.
Until later.
No, it's accept the resignation of Mark Hoopman as a full member of the Treasury Chess Committee. Approve Caleb Chase's request in the amount of $700. Approve another Caleb Chase request in the amount of $700, and another Caleb Chase request in the amount of $580.79, and vote to sign the proclamation.
Second.
It's been moved in second bid. Any discussion? You want to take a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Did you vote? Oh, sorry.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
As to the resignation of Joan Filahi from the COA, this isn't a resignation. I've got to get back to explaining again to people. When you're appointed, you start out with the interview committee, it goes to Board of Selectmen, it gets voted, it goes to the office, there are letters sent out of appointment, and then they have to get sworn in. In order to resign, it's the exact opposite. You have to go back to the person who swore you in, which is the town clerk, then that goes to the selectman's office. And I note that at no point do we have anything in writing from Joan Filahi anyway, because it's just a characterization by the COA director that Joan had resigned, so in both respects, this doesn't count as a resignation.
Okay. So...
I will try to reach out to Joan.
Follow up. Okay, thank you. Okay, public hearings and presentations. The public hearing on, continued from August 6th regarding the building department fees.
So, Madam Chair, just maybe to set the table, at the last meeting, we had presented kind of a market analysis, the building inspector had done that, or building commissioner, sorry, my apologies, and there was a question about, do we comply with the Emerson College case, and how much revenue do we bring in? So, I did have a meeting with Carol and Ray on that question of, do we comply with the Emerson College case, the case for how you establish fees? So, tonight, they have a presentation to respond to that.
Okay, thank you. Good evening.
Thank you, good evening. So, we put some, together some background information, because you had requested additional information. And just here, just kind of the facts here. What's the goal? The goal is to fund the building department with user fees. The revenue from permits right now is less than the building and operating costs, and we'll show you that as well. And then, when we talk about the Emerson versus the City of Boston case, it's at three criteria by the judicial court, and that the fee must be for a particular benefit or service, it must be paid for by choice, meaning voluntarily, such as, you could choose not to build a home or, you know, a business, and the fee must be collected to defray the expenses of the building department. And with that, what was proposed to the Board of Selectmen two weeks ago is in line with that, and we'll show you how. The building commissioner and I went through a process a number of months ago, in which we broke down the cost of town hall operations, making some assumptions, such as, we based the overall admin costs based on FTEs, which are full-time equivalents, so the number of employees in the building department versus the total number of employees of the town. And so, we came up with a 3% allocation, and we used that 3% allocation based on the FY19 budget. And so, in the top right-hand portion of the, of this page here, you'll see that we have allocated 3% of all these departments, which is town administrator, IT services, treasurer collector, the accounting office, and, and then added to that, building salaries and wages, and, and then all of the expenses of the building department, which includes all their benefits, which is health insurance, life, life insurance, their retirement portion, their unemployment portion. What vehicles do they have? We have to insure them, and there's a cost to that. And then, what portion of the town's legal budget is, was allocated toward the building department, and then the building department's expenses themselves, such as, such as fees for supplies and things of that nature. So, the total building costs here come out for FY19, and this is based on the budget again, this is based on what, what was voted in as a budget, $606,732. So, the next screen is going to talk a little bit about what are revenues? What is the budget for revenues? So, I went back a few years, and I put together, what was your actual revenues for FY16, 17, and 18? Where did those compare to what we're looking at now? What did we budget for FY19? And what if there was an increase that was proposed two weeks ago, just on the building permit fees, not on the, any of the inspection fees? And where would that bring it in line to where the expenses were? So, right here, if we based it on a 57% increase for just building permits, and we totaled all of that revenue, we'd be somewhere around $571,000 versus the expenses we have here of $606,000, or just over. So, we're still at a shortfall. And we, what we haven't accounted for are some of the other costs of this building, the town hall. We didn't allocate utility costs. We didn't allocate, you know, their, the building department's square footage and allocate the, let's say, the property insurance premiums. We didn't go that far to do that. But, so, that's, whoops, sorry, I'm sorry. So, I'm not sure if you have questions that pertain to this, if this helps you answer your questions that you had two weeks ago, or if you may have additional questions.
So, I want to ask a question, because I was not here at that particular hearing, but why did we budget less in 2019 than we did in 2017 and 18?
Well, so, so, we estimate revenues, and we've always been conservative on estimating revenues, and, I mean, that's just a financial, well, it's even in, in the board's policies to, to be very conservative on estimating revenues.
So, so, I was just wondering, was there a decrease in building permits in the last, it looks like?
Was there a decrease in the revenues?
And the actual applications for building permits that would...
Oh.
...make us go conservative?
I think, per the board's policy, we're supposed to collect 90% of the year before, so...
Okay.
Maybe do take that into account.
That was just a question I had. All right, thank you. Any other questions?
Yep.
Don?
I, for one, I was one of the people who objected to this. Aside from the fact you're leaving out enforcement actions and other things a building commissioner does, it wasn't that I wanted to see you get in under a cap, I was kind of enjoining you to come up with a buildup about... I was kind of enjoining you to come up with a buildup about, what does it cost you to issue a permit? In terms of FTE hours and everything, and you could, you could put an overlay of overhead and other things to it, but the true cost of issuing the permit is a different question about, than whether you are exceeding your ability under the law to allocate expenses against these permits. So, some of these permits are rather express, and some of them are rather complicated. My, my comment back then is the same as it is now. This isn't a race to the finish line so that we can finish first with the most expensive permits. It's, how much does it cost us to issue a permit? And then, you could put the overhead on it. But none of this answers that.
Well, you know, there are a number of different types of permits, as you know, and the costs vary widely between them. So, I'm not sure how you could really capture that information with a lot of accuracy, in my mind.
I do think, Madam Chair, Ray, the building commissioner, did present last time. I don't think we focused on it, but he did do on the inspection fee analysis, how much it would cost to do those types of inspections. And he came up with a dollar per hour cost. I think it totaled out to be about seventy-four dollars and, seventy-four dollars and nine cents. And he did go when he established the overall price, because it is based upon a square footage formula, to try to come up with that, that exact formula of how much it costs us to do. And he did rate some of these fees based upon that.
Yeah, it also appears that, you know, in terms of square footage value, we're far less than other towns, surrounding towns.
But it's still not a competition. It's based on what our incurred expenses are to actually issue the permit.
Understood.
Not Yarmouth's incurred expenses, our incurred expenses.
Right. But I guess, you know, having filed building permits in all of these towns, and I would say that I have noticed we have lower fees. So, ultimately, you know, it's not costing us a lot less money to issue a building permit for the same types of building applications as it is costing other towns. They're not incredibly larger than ours, or have a much larger workforce. So, I would think that the costs were pretty comparable. And then, we're charging less per square foot. So, I'm not in favor of charging people more money in terms of, you know, just to charge it either, but I would say that we, we need to be able to support our department.
Just as a postscript to this, because I'm not going to be able to argue my way into either, people feel that the relative value is right in line with the proposed. I'm just saying that you've got to plant your flag somewhere. And there are other fees in this town. The fees that are developed have to relate somehow to our incurred expense. It can't, everything can't be that Sandwich charges this and Chatham charges that, because I have no way of knowing whether they went through that endeavor, and I have no way of knowing what their cost to produce those services are. The first and foremost thing that our obligation is, is to see, how much does it cost us to issue a permit? And are we adequately covering that by the expense of the permit?
Any other, Michael?
I guess my question is, this indirect cost, Carol, what was the percentage of indirect costs that we assigned to the water department? I guess that's one question I'll have. Second question, Chris, would be the percent that the building department budget went up last year? I don't recall, I don't know if Ray, do you recall that?
I don't, I, just the building department itself, maybe, I think around eight percent, seven or eight percent. I think we held all the averages to two percent for the mandate. And then, the revenue estimate went up. We estimated about seven percent more this year than we did the year before.
Isn't it fair to say that last year, with the numbers that we used last year, we had leftover money in FY eighteen in the budget? Because funds were encumbered at the end of the FY eighteen to purchase vehicles? So, there was excess money in your budgets?
Yeah, but the budget, this, this is a comprehensive budget, and the, and the budget that we used last year was just the building department directly. It didn't have any of the other costs or fees. For instance, it didn't have any of the community development costs for supplies and that type of thing in it. So, it's two different apples and oranges that we're looking at here. But there was, there was a few thousand dollars left over.
Correct. I was just looking at the goal to fund the cost of operating the building department. It seems to me that we're operating the building department just fine with taxes and fees that are currently set. Am I missing something? I feel like I'm missing something.
Well, I, I mean, from my experience and outside of, you know, in my role, as my job, we are, there are fees here that are certainly much less than other towns.
I get your point, but I'm, to operate the building department, I'm not saying that we're in, that we have an average, that we're not making an average with other towns. I agree with you. But are we not operating our building department with what we're currently charging?
This is the complete, well, view of the...
It's apples and oranges that we're talking about, is what your point is. Last year, we're talking building department. Now, we're talking including community development and all of those pieces, correct?
Correct.
Go ahead, Ed.
Yeah, well, obviously, we're paying the inspectors and keeping their office warm and providing the permit forms, but we're doing it not out of, entirely out of the fees collected, but out of subsidizing it, out of, out of property tax revenues that everybody in town's paying. Now, some of the, some of, there's a portion of what the building department does, sort of enforcement issues, that are sort of police, policing services of the building industry in town, like the, whatever the costs are for that house on Forest Street that has a stop work order, that arguably is something that the town as a whole should bear the cost of. But, for the most part, I would hazard to say ninety-five percent of your activity is involved in actually permitting of construction projects.
That's correct.
That people have.
That's correct.
And according to the figures you've worked up with, for the FY nineteen budget, if we have a revenue of four hundred and twenty-one thousand, we're subsidizing the cost of the building department out of tax revenues by a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars.
That's correct. And the goal was to try to close that gap a little bit, to make it a little more realistic.
Thank you. Any other comments? Go ahead.
And, you know, the problem you have with, with the actual cost of what it takes to issue a permit, you know, there are express permits, and if you look at the sheet of proposed fees, those, those sort of express permits tend to go from fifty-five dollars to seventy-five dollars in the, in the proposal. But if you're doing an addition on the house, the rate goes from thirty-five cents a square foot to fifty-five cents a square foot. So, if you're putting on a hundred square foot bathroom, it's a fifty-five dollar fee. And if you're putting on a thousand foot addition, it's five hundred and fifty dollars for a fee. I would, I would say, you know, in the terms of doing the plan check, there's a lot of steps that you have to go through that really aren't based on, on, on the size of it, you know, so, but for a smaller increase in the assessed valuation, we keep the sort of the permit fee in line with how much of an assessed value increase that you're going to be putting on. So, anyway.
Larry?
The question is, I think, what's the impact, what do you feel the impact is, is on a builder? Is it significant, this increase? Not significant, going up, you know, about sixty percent? Now, what percent of the, of the permit, what's that amount to in terms of building? That's one question I have. And I, in my comment, you know, that I get up the floor, you know, with you and Carol, the homework you've done and the work you've done on this, and the fee structure, in some ways, it, you've made it so complicated, it's hard to follow through, what's going on where, you know? I'll be able to get it direct on these fees, that's one comment. But I would like to see you take this opportunity to look at what the drivers are, and the ways that we can reduce our labor internally, so we're capturing all those revenues. You know, we keep coming back to strategic plan at IT, and how we're doing the planning to make it uniform on the filing. With your homework so far, we should, I would challenge Chris and you to look at this, of what the drivers are in these costs, or the things we can increase our efficiency now, based on all this, on the work you've done. But my first, my first question is, what's the impact on this?
Well, I hope I got your question right. The, when I looked...
I'm saying, does anyone care if we raise it sixty percent, the building permit?
Well, when I, when I did that, excuse me, when I did that comparison and I looked at it, it surprised me that it was that much different from other averages. And, but it was, those are the facts. And so, I went back and I looked at the history of, as far back as I could go, in Harwich, to find out how these fees developed. And the last time it appeared that the base fees were developed was two thousand and seven, which is pretty far back. And then, in two thousand eleven, two thousand and twelve, an extra five percent was added to the base fees for computer upgrades and maintaining the, the new computer permitting software applications that we were developing and are using now. So, these fees have not been raised in a long time. And so, that kind of gave me some feeling that, yeah, maybe the fifty-seven percent isn't so far fetched, in my mind. As far as the raising from, the fees from fifty-five dollars to seventy-five dollars, that was based on the calculation of what I thought it took to do an inspection. So, for single type activities, for instance, oh, I don't know, maybe, there's a list of them on the, on the, on the fee formula there. But a single type activity, I'll give you a double one, because that's what's kind of come to mind right now. A pool, permitting a pool. An in-ground pool is usually two inspections for us. And an above-ground pool is usually one inspection for us. And so, when I averaged the cost out, we said that we were charged, you know, seventy-five dollars for above-ground and a hundred and fifty dollars for an in-ground pool. So, we tried, and that was based on an hour's worth of inspection. Am I confusing you?
You're not confusing me, but you're not answering my question.
Okay.
My question was, if I'm a builder, is this a, do I see this as an impact when you're raising the fee? Or is such a small percent that I just blow it off and pay it?
Can I answer?
This would be considered a very small effect on them.
Ed?
I recently had, had the joy of having my home insurance reevaluated and, you know, example, I called of a thousand square foot addition, it would cost you, it would be an increase of two hundred dollars in the permit fee from, from moving from the thirty-five cent per square foot to the fifty-five cent. My insurance people tell me, Mike, I should plan on construction costs of rebuilding my house somewhere around three hundred and fifty dollars a square foot. So, for the cost of a square foot, of construction cost, it is what the increase in permit fee would, you know?
And I guess also, in comment to some of the things that have been brought up, I, I think the online, and again, you can answer this better than I can, Ray, because I, you know, I don't file a lot in Harwich. But I don't think all applications can still be filed online, correct?
They cannot. Simple ones are filed.
Simple ones, right. So, and then even that, that doesn't, I mean, the online filing process doesn't really mean less personnel. It just means it makes it easier to file certain applications. It doesn't create a less of a review process. They still have to review the plans. They still have to look for the site plan stamped, they have to look at the steel and all of that, in terms of having structural engineers look at that. So, their process, although streamlined for the public in terms of online, and some towns are more versed in it than we are, but that doesn't, you know, reduce the personnel cost. And then, in terms of, you know, looking at the fees last time they were raised, two thousand and seven, tells you that's a long time ago, that these fees in terms of what the actual costs are, haven't been looked at. To Ray's point, if in two thousand and twelve, they were only increased really to, to cover computer costs to go online, which I think that's, that was a bit of a struggle for a while. So, that even probably cost more in terms of timeframe for learning and, and all of those things.
That's correct.
Right? So, overall, we're looking at our town, if we, if we remove the basement fee, which apparently we're the only ones charging that, if we remove that, we're the lowest one on the Cape.
That's correct.
Well, in these communities that you've included, right?
That's correct.
So, overall, we can't be spending less, I would assume, than other communities are on health insurance, utilities, and again, looking at community development budget versus building department budget. So, now, we're trying to look at the new department budget, the comprehensive budget. So, to me, these fees, again, I can't speak to the single homeowner, but I can tell you that in other towns that have, you know, residential applicants, I, you know, I'm not into making people pay more, but I don't think we should be subsidizing it either.
Well, I think that's exactly the point. And I think we have been subsidizing it for a while here now. And this is a step to try to get things in line, in my mind, anyway.
My only argument with you Julie would be, there's, there's never not a time to look at a process and see if we could, maybe not streamline it, makes the data easier to get at, if that were to save us time to review.
I, I agree with you. I think the only problem with when you're doing a building application online, again, I filed them in Gloucester and Hingham and various, in various towns, but ultimately, that review process, I'm just streamlining, and they're streamlining it for me. Now, I don't have to go to Hingham, and now I don't have to go to Gloucester. But that doesn't reduce their period of reviewing those things, and all the departments that it has to be circulated to, doesn't reduce the overall review. It just streamlines it.
Right. It does not change the review process.
Right. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Just two things that are still concerning me, and they remain a concern. First of all, all of these other comparisons don't wash, because I can't go out and get a permit in Barnstable and use it in Harwich. There is no competitive thing like insurance, shopping, or whatever. I mean, you're stuck with what we charge, because you're building it here. So, that's the first thought. The second thing is, and this has been a concern of mine for years, when we're amortizing so that we can load up on fees, the expense of overhead, like the administrator's office and whatever. We've got revolving funds, we've got the water department, DPW, police, fire, schools, accounting, treasurers, assessors, town clerk, library, harbors, golf, the community center. No one has been able to prove to me what that all adds up to when you start talking about fees. Have we gotten, and it wouldn't be something that you would know, Ray, have we gotten to the point where we've amortized the town administrator's salary to the point where it's over a hundred percent? I don't know. No one's been able to demonstrate to me what it is we're using as an overhead factor in all of these fees, so we can justify that we're not making a profit, which is not allowed under law.
Right.
So, with all of that, I mean, we've, this was the first one, and I told you I was picking on you, and I'm sorry.
No, no, you've been fine.
This is the first one where I've had the opportunity to say, hold on a second, how are you building the fee? Where's it coming from? Everybody, it's attractive for everybody. Everybody says, well, you know, it costs money to operate the building, it costs money to have management, it costs money to have... It costs money to have a fleet of cars and insurance. But no one has been able to demonstrate to me what the overall amortization of those expenses has come to, and whether we're at a hundred percent, below a hundred percent, or above a hundred percent. And since the fees cannot make a profit, I'd really like to know how much human effort, how many hours of effort at whatever grades, does it cost you to be able to put out a permit? And is, because everything else is just window dressing. It really boils down to, how much does it cost us to issue the permit? And even this doesn't actually answer that, because Larry's right, it's a lot of numbers, it's a lot, it's cool stuff to look at, but it doesn't say, it takes two and a half hours to issue this permit, and this, at this rate, with this person touching it and that person touching it, our expense is forty-seven dollars. That's really what I was looking for.
It's very difficult to do, because every situation is a little bit different. Not everyone, but a lot of, a lot of it's a little bit different. So, when I picked the model, and it's a model that other people use, it was to try to come up with an average idea of what, you know, of what the cost was to do something like that. And I admit, it's based on the, on the, on the square foot fees of it, but, and not a time evaluation. The only time evaluation is the inspections. I can keep track of that a lot easier than I can the amount of time that's spent on evaluating a permit, because it comes in the door, it touches so many different hands, it sits in places for time, and it's just, it's a, it's a hard number to come to.
Right. And I think to that comment, too, I think you could have a really great set of plans that are for a really advanced house, and you can probably review them quicker than you can review a poorly-done set for an average house, if you have to look that much further at them. So, then, the square footage may be less, but the review time may be more.
Correct.
So, to calculate that number is extremely difficult.
It is, very difficult. And, you know, you're right, an experienced architect knows, you know, what he needs to put together for a set of plans. But a homeowner who's only doing this once, doesn't really know all as much, usually doesn't know as much. And so, we have to help that process along a little bit. And that all gets kind of into the, into the, into the final product here, you know? And it's hard to segregate those costs. But we have to, we have to work with everybody, you know, not just the, not just the easy ones.
Right. You can't charge one set of people once, right, and, right. So, is there further discussion? Leo, did you want to make a comment?
Just to note, this is a continuation of the public hearing.
Previously, right.
Thank you. I'm going to agree with Mr. Howell on this one, and just express that I'm not picking on the building department, or certainly their presentation at all, it just happened to be the first ones up. I asked for this slide to be put back up again, this was the first slide. And as a taxpayer resident, and somebody who feels very strongly that I've made my bones in the finance committee, and certainly attended enough meetings in Howard, I'd like to ask the Board of Selectmen, did we now vote a formal policy that we are looking for every department to have their fees pay for their entire operating costs? Is that a new thing that we are now doing? And is that a policy of the Board?
Go ahead, Chris.
I don't know if it's a policy of the Board, but, you know, we had discussions, or I've had discussions, and it is our obligation to try to follow case law precedents, and Emerson College has a case law precedence. In this case, we were looking to just match up with what Emerson College offered.
Yeah, with all due respect, Emerson College case clearly states you cannot have a fee that brings you in more money than it costs you to operate the particular department that has the fee. I'm not arguing Emerson. What I'm arguing is, at what point in time did the town of Howard formally make the statement that the funds of the cost of operating the building department will be covered entirely by user fees? Because that's a very dangerous statement up there. When I saw that first come up, I got very scared as a taxpayer in this town. Because if that's what you're going to do, and you're putting the building department through it first, and then you're going to have the health department up here, and you're going to have the wrecking youth department up here, and you're going to have all these other departments up here doing that, quite frankly, you're not only taking it out of this pocket, which you've done quite a bit so far, but now, you're reaching into this pocket, too. And I really take exception with the comments of the Chair, saying that it's not your obligation to subsidize the building department. Yes, it is. You are to subsidize the building department with my tax dollars. That's the way I believe municipalities should operate. I've said this before, I'll say it again, and quite frankly, I'm going to say it even more often, because it appears that in the very near future, my wife and myself will not be able to stay here with the amount of property that we do own. And I'm very proud to say that I own a number of pieces of property in the town of Howard. But if my tax rates are going to continue to rise, and the fees are going to continue to rise for every little thing I need, you're basically forcing me out of town, which is fine. But a lot of other people are going to follow me, and you're closing the door to people coming in also. Raise my taxes fifty-seven percent, but don't charge me a dime for a building permit, a boat slip, to play golf, to send my kids to school, or to call the police department to my home. That's what a municipality's responsibility is. Tax me and run the departments you need to run this town. I said this twenty years ago, when Chief Peterson, God rest his soul, brought up the idea of charging the residents of the town of Howard for ambulance services. And the whole idea was, well, we're losing all this revenue. That let the camel's nose under the tent. Because now, we're charging us for everything, and you're raising my taxes. So, I'm getting double hit. That statement scares me. I'm going to stand here and say that, yes, I believe the building department needs to raise its fees. It hasn't been done in ten years. Any logical person would say we need to look at it. His explanation of the express permit was excellent. Fifty dollars now for one that you don't need to go out for an inspection, seventy-five for one inspection, one fifty for two inspections. How can you argue that? Fifty bucks for the paperwork, twenty-five dollars to come out and do an inspection. That's fine. But overall, raising the fees by fifty-seven percent, just because the other towns are charging that much? I'm sorry, that's, I cannot stand for that, and I won't stand for, and I don't think a lot of taxpayers will. It's too much at once, number one. And this first line really scares me. Because if you are actually the executive body of the town, creating policies, if that's a policy that you intend on doing, then I think the taxpayers of this town need to know about it. And they need to hear you take a formal vote, that from now on, you're going to expect every single department to operate under a revolving fund, or operate under an enterprise account. Because how are you going to charge me for police services? You going to charge me every time I call them for something? You going to charge them every time they come to my home? You already charged me for the ambulance when it comes to my house. So, are you going to charge me if the fire department has to come down to put a fire out on my farm? I mean, all this is important, but that first statement really bothered me, as you can well see. As far as this topic that we're on tonight, the building department only, the gentleman came up here and made a very brief statement about the smaller ones, hundred percent behind it, think it's a good idea. Should we increase the square footage from thirty-three cents up a little bit? Makes sense to me, makes sense to me, again, because it's just time, it's been ten years, as the Chair says. But a total, across the board, fifty-seven percent increase? I don't see it. And I hope you will think about it. And I hope you really will strongly think about that first statement. Thank you for giving me the opportunity.
Thank you, Leo. And I think, in the past, I would say that I agree with you a hundred percent on the ambulance fees, and I've stated that. And in terms of subsidizing, what I'm intending to imply is that, you know, overall, we're looking at community development versus the building department, and the need to look at that budget. So, I don't mean to assume that, you know, we're not going to defray the costs of any various department in town. So, thank you for your comments. Any further discussion?
Can I make one more comment?
Sure.
Leo, I can't speak to the other departments.
Ray, can you come up to the mic? Sorry.
I'm sorry. Leo, I can't speak to the other departments. Yeah. But it's my understanding that when the state mandated building departments through all, for all the cities and towns in the Commonwealth, that the mandate included an idea, or at least an idea, and maybe a statement, that the permit fees that were raised from this were meant to defray the costs of operating a building department for the town. Now, that's my understanding. You may have different information than me, but at least for a building department. I can't say for the other departments, but that's the building department.
Thank you, Ray. Ed, did you have something?
You know, this isn't the first time that Leo and I will disagree on something, but in my years, and he's probably opposed what I, and Larry was probably involved in some of this, too, we've moved several of the departments towards covering their costs. The golf department, the harbors and waterways, they're bringing, they're covering their costs more so than they were in the past, which, in my way of thinking, the more we do that, the less pressure we have on taking tax funds to operate all of these services, and less pressure we put on the property taxpayers, which, you know, you hear a lot that people are not in favor of seeing their property taxes rise. For a lot, most people in town, that's, that's the squeeze that they feel. So, are we, are we expecting to have taken an action tonight, or?
Well, this was the second.
Yeah, it's, it is a public hearing, so obviously, the request before the Board would be to, you know, close it and then ask for a motion or continue it for another night. You know, I would just say to the comment, you know, I didn't get a chance, I guess, to fully develop, you know, at least in the time that I've been here, the state law has certain elements where you can, and they encourage you, as Ray said, you know, they want you to defer the cost. I have not, in the time I've been the administrator, recommended across the board that everything be, you know, trued up to Emerson College. And I certainly think that, you know, community center, recreation department, there are certain ones that you need to provide that public service, police and fire, you know, that were mentioned. But I think where it does make sense to look at those areas, where it does make sense to try to capture some of those costs, why aren't we doing that? And, you know, I've been the administrator four and a half years, and the first Board I had, maybe the majority of them, really wanted me to explore that and see, to do that. So, you know, if there's a shift, but, you know, to say to people, everything across the board, we're going to start doing this, you know, I think is a little bit unfair, in all honesty. Because we ought to look at those spots where it makes sense for, instead of raising taxes, we have the ability to capture a fee consistent with the statutes that are out there.
I think, Leo, to your point, I would not be, we've never had a discussion that's pushed this to the absolute, as you suggested, that is, a yes, no, we put everything on fees and not on fees. I think the direction we had a few years ago, and I think we've been consistent with that, is to look at the fees as a proper post, you're capturing what, at least part of the expenses, and hopefully, the majority of expenses, but the rest of it is subsidized by the taxpayers. And that's, as a Board, our judgment, on how much we want to put it on fees and how much we put back to the taxes.
Right. Larry?
Yes. When Ed and Larry and I were Selectmen, and Jim Miriam was the town administrator, and Mr. Ryan was the finance director, there was the beginnings of the implementation of the idea that certain activities ought to be looked at as costs and revenue centers, not formally established as enterprise funds, like the water department is. But there's fundamentally nothing wrong with the concept that having users' fees for the recipients of direct benefits. I mean, there's the concept of public goods, like fire and police protection. You're not going, no one ever, has ever proposed that those should be individually charged by incident to a homeowner or a business, because they come and put out a fire, or they come and, okay? So, generalizing this as a threat to those kinds of things, I, it's, I think that's absurd. But it makes sense to charge user fees when you can relate them to specific benefits, the recipients of the benefits. The people, you know, we have a harbor, we have a golf course, we have other things. The community decided they wanted, and ambulance services are a perfect example. These are, these are things that the community decided that they wanted to have provided for, other than from the private sector, at the charges the private sector, at the prices the charge, public sector would charge. We hear people talking about, you don't want government in competition? Those are examples of where those services could be provided by the private sector, and they'd be a lot more expensive, and the public doesn't want them, doesn't want to pay those prices. But a lot of those services are also, individual recipients benefit from them. There's no reason why the general taxpayers should be covering them.
Thank you, Larry. And to comment further on that, I think to your point, there are, you know, various departments and uses in our community that we do select to use. But I would agree, when it comes to ambulance fees, you know, often, people aren't wishing to have the ambulance, and so that, you know, and a lot of times, the result of the ambulance ride may not be a good one, so it's a hardship to families. So, that's one place I would agree. But overall, to your point, I think we're trying to not increase taxes, so that the people using those various departments, or golf courses, or boats, and et cetera, are paying a fee for those added abilities. Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. But again, in all deference to Mr. Cole, the fire department was operating based on taxation. They moved to a system where they said, there's, you know, there's money out there, and those insurance companies have it, and all we have to do is bill it. We now operate a fire department that bills your insurance company, bills you back for anything your insurance company doesn't pay. We budget it through the regular taxes, and we go through debt exclusions to buy equipment. I mean, we're paying for that department in numerous ways. My concern here all along was, because you're getting fees from the water department, you're getting fees from harbors, you're getting fees from golf. I'm just trying to figure out how we're lathering on this overhead expense and how this all fits together, because Larry and I haven't always agreed on the concept of cost centers and profit centers. But I will say, I'm pretty sure we all agree, that we're not trying to turn a profit on the overall construct. We're trying to figure out, how much does it cost us, and are there things that everybody wants? I would argue, everybody wants a water department. So, outside of charging for the gallonage, maybe we shouldn't be charging anything above that. And that's as much of a human need as the police or the fire department. But if we get past a hundred percent for our overhead, without even knowing, because we've never done an analysis of this, I've been following this since before Larry was a Selectman, because I was a Selectman back then, and there's been no analysis of how much we're going to plug in for that X-factor, that we're carrying the cost of the town administrator, the accounting office, and whatever. At some point in time, we got to figure out how we're doing that, with some clarity.
Okay. Well, we need to make some sort of decision on what we're moving here.
Yeah, I was going to just suggest, Madam Chair, if I, I don't think we put a specific date on there, but if there was a motion, you could pick either January one, or do July one, so that way, people would have fair notice that, you know, the change was coming. And that would administratively give us some time to put that in. But if the Board was to make a motion supporting the recommendation of the building commissioner, I would just ask that you include in the motion the date of implementation.
Ed?
I'd like to move that we close the public hearing.
Can't do that. Point of water, you'd have to close the hearing, and then they...
That's what I was trying to do.
Okay.
Moving that we close the public hearing.
Right. Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed? Okay.
And, Madam Chair?
Yep.
I'd like to move that we adopt recommended increases in the building department fees, and make the increase effective January first, 2019.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Do I have a second? I'll second that.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Well, again?
Against.
Against.
Yeah, I'd like to see it looked at again, fees.
Okay, so bring it back again.
Right.
It would have been better to just.
Third time's a charm.
Continue the hearing, you can't. You've got to do a new hearing.
We'll close the hearing.
Close the hearing.
I know.
But we can open it again.
It failed, we can move on.
Right.
That's what I was trying to do.
Okay. Now, Dennis, Harwich, Yarmouth, special legislation with section by section summary, John Giorgio. Good evening, John.
Good evening.
Nice to see you again.
Are you assuming the board knows?
And David, yeah.
David Young, yeah.
Sorry, David, you weren't.
He's like far the family, so.
Yeah, right, exactly. Okay. So, I wanted to, we wanted to give you a report on the status of the special legislation just for everyone's edification. At the Springtown meeting, Town Meeting voted to authorize the selectmen to work with the other two towns to come up with special legislation that would be filed to create the Dennis, Harwich, Yarmouth Clean Waters Community Partnership. And that vote provided that the agreement that would come out of the legislation would not take effect until it was approved by the towns that were participating in the final agreement. So, after that vote, the next step was to prepare and file the legislation, and that's been done. And we have been working with Representative Wayland and the House Legislative Council to come up with a final bill that addresses all of the concerns from the various boards and from legal review. Now, once that legislation is passed, the towns will, or if it's passed, I should say, the towns will get together, negotiate agreement, and if an agreement is reached, that will then have to go to a town meeting for final approval. So, the, what we wanted to do, well, I should say that next Tuesday night, the Dennis Board of Selectmen are meeting on this, and I believe the Yarmouth Board of Selectmen are meeting that same night. So, it will be before the three boards, you know, by that time. So, what we wanted to do tonight is to just go through a section by section summary of what the bill does. And to that end, I had prepared a summary, David reviewed it and provided some comments, and that section by section summary is in front of you. So, House Counsel had prepared a number of recommended changes to the bill and had made, raised some questions that we've, so what we did with that is we prepared a revised version of the bill that addresses their questions, answers, addresses their comments, answers their questions, and we've made a few additional revisions. And so, we're hoping that that's going to be processed through Representative Wayland's office, and then the bill would be ready. So, if I could, with the board's indulgence, is to just go through the section by section analysis. So, first of all, I think it's important that everyone bear in mind that really the primary purpose of this legislation is to fulfill the intent of Town Meeting and to create an independent governmental entity that's going to be able to actually do the job of designing and constructing a wastewater treatment plant. I understand the proposed site is in Dennis, and that both Yarmouth and Harwich would participate in this arrangement and essentially deliver wastewater to the plant, and that the effluent after treatment would be sent back to the towns for disposal at individual, town individual sites. But it is important that in order for this to work properly, this board needs to have, you know, a measure of independence. So, Section 1 of the Act creates what's called a body politic incorporate. It is an independent public agency. It would, it's not subject to the control of the towns, except to the extent that each town is going to appoint commission members. The number of members and the size of that commission is going to be determined through the negotiation of the agreement. But this is, will be a public entity, so it's going to be subject to the open meeting law, the public records law, and those commissioners and employees will be subject to the conflict of interest law. So, it's going to look and operate very much like a board of selectmen, except it's going to be an independent board made up of appointees from the three towns. Who will appoint the members? It'll be the, the agency in each town that is responsible, either a board of sewer commissioners or in the absence of such, the board of selectmen acting as sewer commissioners, which right now in Harwich is what you have. There may be at some point a charter amendment that's been discussed that would combine the sewer authority with the water commission. That has not obviously passed, but that may be something that happens down the line. So, what would be the, the powers of this commission? And, you know, there's, there's a very long list in the special legislation, but I'm just trying to highlight the ones here. The commission can acquire land, including by eminent domain and for the wastewater treatment and disposal purposes. Now, what's interesting, that sounds scary, you know, the power of eminent domain, but in fact, this board of selectmen has the authority to take land by eminent domain without Town Meeting approval for wastewater purposes. Your limitation would be, of course, as with the commissions, having the appropriation sufficient to pay just compensation. Most times, even with major sewer projects, there's a negotiation and an acquisition without having to resort to the power of eminent domain, but you really do need that authority, I'll say, in your back pocket in case, in case you really need to exercise it.
And I might add that that's only after they ask the community to first consider taking it by eminent domain, do they have that power.
That's, that's correct. They, they would ask the community, and then they'd have to wait a certain period of time if the community itself did not proceed.
And the community would have to vote for the appropriation too, right?
The commissioner from that community would have to vote positively, correct?
The commissioner of the town.
The town.
No, no.
Comes back to the town as well.
At least.
If we're spending money, wouldn't they come back to the town as well or not?
No.
No, it would be under that entity's budget bonding authority to acquire that. But the commissioner from that community where they're acquiring it would have to vote in the positive.
At least one commissioner would have to vote in the positive. It doesn't authorize them to take public land. They couldn't, for example, come and take land in Harwich or Dennis that's publicly owned. They would have to go to the legislature for that kind of authorization. So, this, this commission will have the authority to incur debt, and there is going to be debt that will need to be incurred for this project. But to keep in mind, so what would happen, let's, let's just say that you're building a $30 million treatment plant, the commission would incur that debt, would notify the towns ahead of time, so that you could put, build into your budget the fact that the debt service on that debt will be part of the assessment to each of the towns going forward. And those assessments to each town will be, cover both the debt service costs of the commission plus the operating costs of the commission. And so, then the question becomes, well, how will the town of Harwich raise that money? And of course, listening to all this discussion we just had, there's plenty of provisions in this special act that would allow the town to, as it is authorized under the general laws, you could assess betterments and privilege fees, you can also obviously assess user fees to the users in your system, and you could potentially cover the entire cost of that assessment through those betterments and user fees. You could also decide, and this is purely a local decision, whether or not you're going to subsidize a portion of that cost on the tax rate. But that's a policy decision for the town to make and potentially ultimately Town Meeting to decide how much you're going to raise through betterments and user fees and how much through your tax rate. They can, obviously, the commission can hire consultants and employees, they will have the authority to execute contracts in, in conformance with procurement laws. They will, they have the authority to dispose of real and personal property as well as acquire the property. And of course, there's the catch-all phrase, they can take any other action necessary and convenient to carry out the project. Now, Section 5 of the Act basically says, you know, you, the town of Harwich, will get your assessment from the commission, and you're required to pay that a portion share with or without an appropriation. And so, what that means is, you know, I would assume you will, and this may be part of an enterprise fund budget, but you'll go to Town Meeting each year and ask for an appropriation to cover the costs of participating in this district. And Town Meeting will appropriate, hopefully appropriate that money, but if they do not, if Town Meeting refuses, then the commission can, you still have to pay the assessment, even if the money wasn't appropriated, and the commission has the power to sue you for recovery of those, those, those costs. And there's something called, I don't know if you're familiar with this, the local aid intercept, but if one of the towns, for whatever reason, doesn't pay its proportion share, then the treasurer, the state treasurer is directed to essentially intercept local aid and grants that would otherwise be coming to the town. So, that's the financial mechanism that the commission has to ensure that it can fulfill its obligation, which is obviously paying for the costs associated with, with providing this, this service.
And part of the reason that was put in there is because the entity would have its own bond rating, and so it needs to ensure to the bonding companies that it will get paid and recover the revenues.
And those kinds of details can also be worked out in the agreement itself, which would be the next step in terms of how actual capital assessments will be made and how they'll, they'll be paid for. There's a little bit of a scary provision in this bill, at least it looks scary, but it essentially says that as a, the district can assess these costs, and the town can raise the money to pay those costs outside of your proposition two and a half levy limit. Now, to the extent that you choose to pay the cost through user fees, as I said, and betterments, that provision would never even come into play unless you do decide that you're going to pay 100% of this cost on the tax levy or some portion of it, in which case you will be able to raise that money through a Town Meeting vote, but outside of your levy limit under proposition two and a half. I think I mentioned that if the legislation passes and if the agreement is approved, it has to go back to Town Meeting for approval. Now, let's say one of the three towns decides, Town Meeting says, no, we don't want to do this. The legislation would allow the other two towns to proceed with a two-town agreement rather than a three-town agreement. So, that option would potentially be available, even if all three towns do not ultimately participate. So, there are also provisions in here that you would normally see, this commission has the authority to adopt bylaws and to issue regulations having to do with the acceptance of wastewater at the plant. The agreement will provide that, while the towns, the sewer commissioners in each town have the authority to enact similar regulations, yours have to be at least as stringent as those from the treatment plant. And I would remind the board that that very same provision exists in your intermunicipal agreement with the town of Chatham, because the commission and this entity is going to be the permit holder, they're going to be required to comply with all environmental rules and regulations. So, they want to ensure that your regulations are as stringent as theirs so that there isn't a permit compliance issue. And then finally, as I said, if you do decide to assess betterments for capital costs or privilege fees, and, you know, we can talk about those various methods that you have available under the general laws to, to recover the costs of this project, but you will, you will retain all of that authority under, under the general laws. So, if, you know, assuming we go forward in all three towns, the final draft of the bill will be, will be prepared. We're waiting to hear back from House Counsel through Representative Wayland's office as to the changes. Now, for example, one change I made was there was a provision in here that said the commission would elect a chairman and vice chairman by ballot, and you really, as you know, you really can't do that under the open meeting law. So, one of our comments is to strike that. We're also striking a little bit of redundant language. But overall, the changes we've proposed are, are in line with what House Counsel has already approved. We just have to go through the process of finalizing the bill. So, with that, we'll attempt to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, John. I'm beside the board. Ted?
In the commissions doling out of the assessment, is there any segregation between capital and operating costs?
Well, I would defer to David, but I assume, it's not in the act. What we wanted to do here was have a five-page document with the basics. All of that detail, Ed, is going to be in the agreement that's ultimately negotiated. And David helped us negotiate the Chatham intermunicipal agreement, and if you look at that, if you read that agreement, those kinds of details are in the agreement, and that's the appropriate place for it.
Yes, those will be detailed extensively in the agreement, as currently drafted, again, using the Mansfield-Foxborough-Norton model as a template. Fixed costs would be proportioned based on ownership, flow owner, capacity ownership in the plant, and operating costs would be broken into fixed and flow variable. Again, the fixed costs would be paid based on how much you owned, and flow variable would be how much flow you're sending in a given year. But those are all detailed in the agreement itself.
John?
No disparaging to Larry, but I like it better when you're putting the agenda together because I don't wind up having to be negative all night. But here we go. Trying to take up the mantle of the taxpayers here, we've been through two phases for the Chatham agreement. Everybody in town, at Town Meeting, voted to take on bonding, which translates into taxation into their individual circumstance. In addition to the people who benefit from that, have to pay for their pipe and for the effluent that goes through it. I am hugely in favor of throwing in with two other towns to keep the expense down. What I am not hugely in favor of is you've got regional schools where Town Meetings have to appropriate money. You've got our water department where it's an enterprise fund, but you've got to go to Town Meeting and ask for permission. There is absolutely no relationship between this construct and our taxpayers. These people are appointed by the Board of Selectmen, who, by the way, are not the legislative body, they're the executive body of town. There is no provision for any kind of public input in this whatsoever. I would feel a lot better, I mean, if any money that they were borrowing would be subject to a vote at Town Meeting, but that's not how this is constructed.
Correct, correct.
Can you name me anything on Cape Cod that's analogous to this? Where they've got their own bonding authority? By the way, where would the cost containment be? If I knew that I could just go and send a bill out to somebody and it wasn't subject to a Town Meeting, wasn't subject to anything? Where, where is the containment on the operating costs for anything?
Well, I think the containment, and if you were to ask the folks who have generated the MFN agreement or district, that, you know, they have, their commissioners are appointed by those communities. All financial votes over a certain dollar value require a supermajority vote of the commissioners. They require a positive vote from each of the commission communities. There's lots of protections that get written into the agreement, which is still being worked on here. This agreement, again, just allows you the opportunity to create that entity. The details will be in the agreement addressing the types of concerns that you're raising.
Well, are we afraid of the taxpayers? Why wouldn't you go to each town and ask her in Town Meeting?
Well, the benefit of this.
Like you do for a, a regional school, like you do for your water, even a water district? I mean, there's this, people get elected. There is no election process here, these are appointed commissioners.
By you.
Yeah. There's no direct election. I mean, let's not be. I mean, let's not be clever about this. We get elected, but they're appointed. The public has absolutely no say in that, and they have absolutely no say in individual yearly budgets. I mean, would this be a deal killer if we said that they had to go back to town meeting for appropriation?
That goes against it being a separate entity, yes.
If I might suggest- Well, how does a regional school system operate then? If I may suggest, Don, I do think, I do think that the opportunity to address those concerns would be a vigorous negotiation of the agreement. You know, our recommendation would be, let's get this legislation in place. You are not committed to this unless the five of you approve that agreement ultimately and that you're satisfied that sufficient protections are in the agreement. And number two, town meeting has to approve that agreement. And there, there needs to be a vigorous debate at town meeting. And if town meeting says, we don't like the independence, we don't like the lack of say by the voters, they won't approve the agreement. So there, that's where your protection is, I think. But the legislation itself specifies this way of operating. But it will not operate at all unless and until an agreement is in place. And that agreement can place additional controls on the ability of this commission to operate. And if it doesn't, you don't sign the agreement or town meeting doesn't approve the agreement. That's, that's, I think, the concept. This, you know, we had the step of town meeting, we have now the step of the special legislation. But the really big step, in my humble opinion, is going to be that agreement and whether we can work out all of those details and bring a document to town meeting that town meeting will accept. And I would argue, if town meeting accepts it, that's the voter's opportunity to speak. But again, my central question was, can you name me another construct on Cape Cod that operates without appropriation and sends a bill? There's no direct voter input, nothing. There are examples- On Cape Cod? No, there are not examples on Cape Cod. There are, that I know of, there are examples off Cape.
Right.
Yeah, well, ZMWR, I mean, but you know, that's the whole thing that I'd be trying to avoid is something that's supra-governmental.
Are there any other comments from any other board members? Because I think, oh, sorry.
Yeah, where are the other towns with this? David, are you following the feedback from the other boards as this conversation's, has happened or?
Again, we started this process, we've been having monthly meetings with the subgroups that you folks appointed, Larry, Chris, sometimes you attended a couple of the first ones. On a monthly basis, discussions have been very positive. One of the meetings, we had a, the executive director and the chair of the commission come down from the MFN agreement to explain how it's been operating, you know, the process they went through to get to that point. Good discussion. I take a lot of good feedback. You know, they've offered to come down and meet with others in the future going forward to try to address any of those questions. So, yeah, I think everybody is very positive and looking to move this, realizing that, as John indicated, the agreement's the big step. And everybody needs to be comfortable with that, even for you to bring it to town meeting. And then that's another big step. So there's several checkpoints along the way for public input, for things to be addressed in the agreement. The MFN Regional Wastewater District was the first wastewater district created in the state in over 25 years. There were several districts formed back in the seventies, early eighties, when the federal government was paying 90% for the wastewater programs. But then that died off. But now with communities realizing the benefits of going back and working together, you know, I think you're starting to see this discussion come about in other communities. Mansfield, Foxborough, Norton, Mansfield owned the plant and it had two customers along the way with intermunicipal agreements. Foxborough and Norton. They all agreed that the only way they were going to go forward is Mans, is Foxborough and Norton wanted more say and control in what was being done at the treatment plant. So instead of just signing up another intermunicipal agreement, that's when they created the entity where commissioners represented from each community now have the say in overseeing that facility and that entity. And it's strictly just for wastewater treatment and recharge.
So we're going to have this very same conversation next, a week from tomorrow night and going to Dennis. I don't know where you're going.
We're first, Tom.
Going to Dennis and Yarmouth.
And, but I would also point out that, you know, this is very consistent, obviously, with the Section 208 Water Quality Plan update. And, you know, the advancement of this kind of regional cooperation is certainly going to be favorably looked on by the, the grant agencies, I would think.
It's not only the grant agencies, but at the One Cape Conference, which was held by the Cape Cod Commission last Thursday, Friday, we presented this scenario. But it was also highlighted by the governor, the lieutenant governor, the secretary of environmental affairs as the model they would like to see other communities using going forward.
To that point, I think that's one place it's hard to say what are other, what other communities on the Cape? Because we have been applauded for being at the forefront. So we're not going to find those comparisons on Cape where we're one of the leaders, which is good news for us. I think to Don's point, though, in terms of, of the charge, which again, to your point, comes further along the line, a couple of questions I have are in terms of the bond rating, for instance, for the commission. How, how does that get determined based on the various towns and their bond ratings and, you know?
What they did for MFN, that's the only example I can speak to, is they aggregated the bond rating of the three communities because they make up the district. So they went and looked at the bond ratings of all three and came up with a new one for that district, knowing that they had the restrictions in there that they would be paid.
But that would be the rating agency that does that.
Yes, yes.
Rating agency, right, right.
The bond rating agency.
And then if a town didn't pay, to your point, the treasurer, the state treasurer steps in in terms of further along the line.
Yes.
If we, if one community said, I'm not paying.
Right.
The treasurer would step in to make sure that those monies came back to the towns that were paying.
Right. And to think of it, the, the rating agencies probably wouldn't rate you at all if there wasn't that mechanism in place to ensure that the bonds are going to be repaid.
Right.
So I did, I, there are actually a couple of, I, I'm going to take this back. There, there was one example of this, and that was in the, the CMAS partnership solid waste. You were in a 20-year agreement? And you, and that, those kinds of provisions were in that agreement for solid waste disposal. The new agreement that you're in now doesn't have that same guaranteed tonnage, but there are a lot of communities that still have that. And that was put in place to assure the, the, the bondholders that they would, the bonds would be repaid.
I was going to recognize Leo and then, go ahead, Leo.
Thank you. I don't have the statute or what you're planning on filing to the state legislature in front of me. But what I understand, just by listening to the discussions, that the makeup of this board and how they are either appointed or elected is part of that statute. And if it is, I would argue that, you know, I know this is the first step, but when you take the first step and it's heading you in the wrong direction, then you're wasting your time with the second, third, fourth, and fifth step. I would strongly suggest that you not support a creation of a committee that is going to have the authority that this committee is going to have by an appointed position. I agree with Selectman Howell, this is a very important position. It should be elected position. It probably should have some kind of compensation along with it so that we get decent, interested folks that will run for this. It sounds like it's a very encompassing and a lot of responsibilities. So it certainly isn't something that you're going to just freely put out a citizens activist form and hopefully you'll get someone who's going to return and say, sure, I, I'm interested in wastewater. And you're, you're going to point them on there. I also think that that goes strongly to the fact that if this new board is going to have the authority that is being expressed by John, it's, it's essential that they be elected. How are they going to commit that kind of bonding situation when they are, again, an appointed body? We, I don't know. I just, I don't like that aspect of it. And I'm hoping that before you agree to this language of the statute that you're going to send up to the House of Representatives, that you read it and really make sure that you're on board with every single aspect of it. Because it is the first step, I will agree. But it also, if we don't take the first step right, then the rest to follow are just not going to line up. Thank you for allowing me some time.
Thank you, Leo.
I'm going to go slightly a different direction in what Leo mentioned, and that is, you know, I'm hugely in favor of this because it's tremendous cost savings for the town to do this as a regional agreement. I'm a little concerned about the, you know, even though it's the first step, there's a framework that ties our hands in doing the negotiations and the details going on. I would like to better understand, I think, David, you, both of you mentioned that it has to be independent. I'd, I'd like to better understand why we couldn't have the town involvement and still have it be an independent board. You know, why is that, why does it have to be separate from town meeting for appropriations, for instance, and still? You know, why is that a fact? And I, and I, and I understand a lot of this is set up by how the, from the direction from the state and how they, how they move forward. But I'd be more comfortable if there was some appropriation going back to town meeting. And, and you're saying that's not possible. I'd like to better understand that.
Well, the difficulty with that, Larry, is that say, 10 years down the road, they have to do a $10 million expansion or some upgrade at the treatment plant. Under that scenario, that would require three different votes at three towns to pass in order for that to move forward. And say, only two of them move forward. What do they do?
But don't they have backup language now in case that doesn't happen? You can, I mean, I think, John, you read some backup language. You, they can-
That's for after it's been bonded and to get paid for that assessment on an annual basements, basis. They wouldn't be able to go up for bonding if all three towns didn't pass that for whatever reasons. Their hands would be tied.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure I follow that exactly because why is that different then if you don't pay now? Because it has to be after bonding. You couldn't do it before bonding and say you-
So if, if I, if I may to answer your question-
I'm just trying to say if it can be independent and still, I'm a little uncomfortable moving this from town for appropriations.
It can be independent, but there could be a, a enhanced role by town meeting. And I would encourage you to, to think of a regional school district. Because a regional school district is an independent entity. It cannot borrow unless they're authorized by town meetings in each of the towns to do that. And the, and in a three-town district, if, if two towns, you know, and we could, we could write this any way you want it, but for an example, an assessment of the local budget, if two towns in a three-town district vote in favor, then the third one sort of has to go along with it. So that's possible to do in this legislation. The question that's going to come up is by, by having those layers of approval, are you going to impair the ability of this commission to get the job done, which is to provide wastewater treatment and disposal? And that's, that's the policy question that you all have to grapple with.
If I may, my, my follow-up to that is, is this draft is, does that prevent us from having that type of discussion going forward? In other words, this specifies as completely, you know, independent with no, it sounds like that prevents us from having a very discussion, John, you suggested we should have.
So that's a little bit-
That's my concern.
Okay, so I, I think if you wanted to have, let me see if I can answer it this way. If you agree with Don that you would want these commissioners to be elected, that has to be in the legislation. You couldn't in the agreement call, call for them to be-
And I'm not really, from my personal opinion, I'm not so sad on that.
That was Leo. I, I just wanted to go to town meeting.
Okay.
I want to go, I'm, I'm with Don on that.
To make them elected-
For appropriation of money, I'd like to have some say in town meeting.
To make them elected, it would have to, they, it would have to be special, specified in the special act. As to appropriations and local procedures and approvals, that agreement could have the kinds of safeguards you, you may be looking for, notwithstanding the authority that this commission has under the legislation. Because this whole thing is dependent upon an agreement that will be binding on the three towns and approved at town meeting.
So to restate then my question, this, this document's framework allows us to do that, what you said.
I think it does, yes. I think it does.
Because that's the part I want to be clear on, because if it's so specified that, in fact, we don't have a decision point later on, then, then I would, then I have some difficulty with it. And I'm a, I'm a huge supporter of it.
Where does it say that?
So Ed had a question, so let's, Ed, let's get you.
Based on the discussion that Larry was having on the independence of the body, you know, it would be one thing to have to return to town for expansions or, you know, we want to expand the district to include, cover more territory or, or whatever, to require all the towns to have a vote to approve it. But once it's, once the commission or the district is up and running and it's sold bonds and has debt repayments due every year, and it's operating and has operating expenses, and if you have to have your appropriations approved by the towns and you send it out and two of the towns don't approve it, what do you do? Not pay the bonds or shut down the plant because you can't operate it, you don't have the funds to do it? I mean, you know, there's got to be, once, once you've committed to treating your sewer this way, you've got to create a system that can, can continue to operate.
So I'm going to address Don's question that he was asking. So actually, Section seven of the Act said, says the member town shall adopt an agreement consistent with this act. I do think there would be the ability to add additional protections in the agreement. But the other thing you could consider is negotiating the agreement to make sure that we, everybody knows what they're getting into before the legislation goes forward. Now, that's going to slow this whole process down. And again, ultimately, the agreement, whatever we negotiate, needs to be approved by you and by the town meeting.
So we know that the two other towns, Yarmouth and Dennis, are going to be discussing this next week. Prior, you know, previous in our other discussion, we had, you know, input from all the boards, had a meeting and included all, you know, all the discussion in terms of how we move forward. So it seems to me like this is something we should come back to again after next week and we see how both of those boards move forward. Did you have another comment?
No, I, I concur. I, I think we need to bring this back. I think this is going to be a, a very lengthy discussion. And given the hour, I don't think we're going to come up with an intelligent decision tonight. I'd like to see the feedback from the other towns and maybe request a meeting with the other two towns so that the three of us can hash out similar concerns, maybe a special meeting. But given the hour, this can go on for the rest of the night.
And the reason I'm pressing the question is not to be, because I'm positive about it. But these are questions we need to, as much as possible, it's our responsibility to answer them. Otherwise, if we can't answer them here, we're never going to answer them at town meeting.
Right.
Right. And they're all valid questions and, you know, we need to be, you know, we need to be looking forward in terms of, you know, how we move forward with this and this group. And we all agree that we've got to this point because we agree that it's a good idea in terms of hashing out the particulars. And, and if we have legislation, you know, that describes what we can do one way without making further revisions, and we do that, to Leo's point, you know, we may be tying our hands. So, you know, I think we need further discussion. We need to see how the other towns are looking at it next week. And Don, you have one more question because I think we do want to wrap this up.
I understand, Madam Chair, but this is relevant as we go forward. I had no understanding, none, that there was going to be a separate construct. Despite what Ed said, I, I grew up in the New York City area. I'm familiar with the Port Authority, the, the MTA, and all sorts of other constructs which absolutely have no boss. And they have operated as such. There's no cost containment because they don't report to anybody. They are their own thing. They transcend political subdivisions. This was a surprise to me, and I am hugely in favor of throwing in, when we were talking about it, no one suggested that this would be its, its own organism that would just go off on its own, tax you, borrow money, and do whatever it wanted to. So with that in mind, I don't see any, I'm sorry, John, but I don't see anything in this agreement. This is so specific about how the construct works. I don't see how you could get the legislature to pass this and say, yeah, we like the idea, but we're going to change everything in it. So, Don, so that's the reason why I requested we, we meet with the board directly. So, Don, so that's the reason why I requested we, we meet with the board directly, because I had a suspicion...
Well, I think you know where I'm going, so when you go to the other towns, you, you can understand when you come back those are the questions.
I had a suspicion that maybe this agreement wasn't fully, or this special act wasn't fully understood, but to your point about could we do an agreement that provided less independence to this commission than what's provided, I think we can, we could tweak section seven that, so that it would allow the agreement to do that. So, I, I agree with, Mike, I think we should get the pulse of the other two towns, see where we are, and frankly, I think a joint meeting would probably be an excellent idea.
That's it.
Just a quick note, too, I find myself agreeing with Don more often than not, but I did drive up to Mansfield and, and met with David Young and some members of their commission, at least one member of the commission was there. So, there is a lot of history here, there is a lot of background information, there's a lot of these questions that have been answered about fights, how towns felt about it, and that seems to be running very well, so I still support the concept, but I think we're a ways away.
So, we'll move forward with bringing this back after, you know, for the...
Be a fan of the special meeting, isn't it?
Yeah, but, as I, well, we'll, we'll wait till after Tuesday and then we'll request that special meeting.
We do have a meeting on Friday, the three towns, so we could certainly provide the feedback and say that maybe after they meet, then see if we can convene something.
Yeah, I think that makes sense, and it's not, it's not, you know, different than the way we proceeded previously, so I think it makes sense. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Okay, presentation, Permanent Protection for Nantucket Sound, Audra Parker.
Thank you for your time and your interest. I'm Audra Parker, and I represent the Alliance to Protect Nantucket Sound, and the Alliance is seeking permanent protection for Nantucket Sound through federal legislation, and I'm here this evening to ask for the town's support for this preservation effort. So, I will be brief, but just to give you a little bit of background on what this legislation would do. The legislation, as I said, would be federal, it would be twofold. It would designate Nantucket Sound as a national historic landmark, so, for example, the island of Nantucket and the Kennedy compound are examples of existing national historic landmarks, and that would raise the level of protection for this body of water and recognize its unique maritime history, its unique importance to the Wampanoag Tribe on Martha's Vineyard, the one on Mashpee. The second part of the legislation would be a prohibition for any, any federal agency from authorizing any type of energy generation or exploration project. So, the federal government could not issue any kind of permit lease or authorization of that type of project in Nantucket Sound. To step back, just so that you're aware, from Cape Cod shoreline, Nantucket shoreline, Martha's Vineyard shoreline, out three miles is under state jurisdiction, which is currently protected under the Massachusetts Ocean Sanctuaries Act, which prohibits large-scale development, large-scale industrial development. The center of Nantucket Sound is under federal jurisdiction, so it's a split jurisdiction, and that's why we are seeking legislation that would basically close, close that up and protect all of Nantucket Sound as well as give it the recognition it deserves as a national historic landmark. I believe you're in receipt of the draft bill as well as a stakeholder letter. We have a stakeholder letter that has about forty-five groups signed on, including chambers of commerce, municipalities, environmental groups, ferry lines, airport commissions, business groups, the tribes. So far, we have reached out to all of the towns on the Cape, Nantucket and Martha's Vineyard that face Nantucket Sound. We have, we've had unanimous votes in favor of the legislation from eight of those eleven towns. This would be the ninth town, and I'm on the schedule for the remaining two. So, so far, we have Mashpee, Yarmouth, Barnstable, Dennis, Oak Bluffs, Tisbury, Edgar Town, and Nantucket that have signed on. And so, I don't, I don't know if you have any questions, but so the, the request would be to ask the town of Harwich to sign on in addition to support this preservation effort. Oh, and additionally, we have a separate letter from the governor in support of this effort as well.
Thank you. Any questions?
When this first came up, my one concern was the clarity at which it would, the protections would not prohibit the installation of transmission lines through the sound, and it's clear that that prohibition is not provided for in this, and, and because of that, I'd, I'd support town of Harwich being a signatory, and would so move.
Yes, to, sorry.
Any further discussion?
I was just gonna clarify that that's, that's, in fact, the case, that there, it would not prohibit any kind of cables that are passing through Nantucket Sound, connecting to the projects that lie outside of the sound, and in fact, Vineyard Wind has signed on in support of this, so this would not have any impact on the offshore wind industry as long as it is outside the purview of Nantucket Sound, you know, defined as the body of water between the Cape, Martha's Vineyard, and Nantucket.
Thank you. Larry, did you have any comment?
No.
Okay. Don?
Yeah, just have a quick question. Who would determine what is included then? And is there any provision for, if we can't contemplate that today, you know, like twenty years from now, something comes up, is there any provision for anybody to assess that?
For the definition of Nantucket Sound, are you asking, or?
For what is an industrial activity?
So, it's defined, it would prohibit any federal agency from authorizing or issuing a lease or permit for any ener- energy generation project or extraction activity, so it would basically cover, at this point, offshore wind, it would cover oil and gas exploration, and potentially unanticipated technologies. The one that we did look at and questions came up about tidal or wave power, so we've explicitly, the, the conditions in Nantucket Sound do not seem suitable, according to hydrokinetic experts, for either, with the exception of possibly Muskegat Channel, so we've made sure that that, because that the definition's not clear, that Nantucket Sound would exclude Muskegat Channel to allow that type of activity. Does that help?
Okay, so, you've made a motion, you second it.
Yep.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Larry, what's your...
Yeah, I'm, uh...
You're not?
Yeah, aye, aye.
Aye.
He didn't open his mouth. I said the aye, right?
Marginally, marginally, aye.
Unanimous?
It's unanimous, right.
But, but my question, actually, I mean, I, I'll go with it, but I'm always a little fearful of an absolute resolution that some years in the future, someone comes up with a creative idea, and this, that doesn't, by all measures, affect the sound, this is prevent it, so I'm, I'm nervous about it, but we'll see...
That's where I was driving at.
But I guess we'll see what happens. I trust you're reasonable, I guess, which, I'm always fearful regulations being reasonable. That's mine.
Okay.
Pardon?
I guess that's why they get amended sometimes.
I hope, uh, uh, they have that, yeah, 'cause...
Do we, do you wanna?
Yeah, well, Larry, that's...
It's hard to hold against a good environment, but this does make me nervous.
It's always the point, this is simply a bill that would be passed by a legislature, that if a really good idea comes along twenty years from now, a, a future legislature can amend it if it's, if it's that good of an idea.
Okay, so, on to new business. Harwich Parking Committee Charge. Now, Don, do you wanna?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. What you have in front of you is proposed charge for an ad hoc committee, it's not a permanent committee. And, uh, to, to the...
To one.
Yeah, it's actually easier working off of this. What I developed here is, I'm, I was trying to stay on point as po, as much as possible, and what I did is, we went and looked at several different towns that have parking committees, whether ad hoc or not. I recognize, and I think we all recognize, that we're not looking at an egregious problem all year long, that's, that has one solution and it's gonna be that simple. The problem here is, to the extent there's a problem, sometimes it's worse at night, sometimes it's worse during the day, sometimes it's worse in the summertime than it is in the winter, although if there's a special occasion, like the lighting of the Christmas tree, that it gets you back to that situation again. I tried to be fair in terms of setting this up, we need some sort of context, and I thought it was very important to have the town planner and the chamber of commerce executive. I traded off one business community member for the executive director of the chamber to be there. So, the construct of this has three local residents that would be invited onto the committee, two business people, the town planner, and the executive director of the chamber of commerce, because we have a tendency to just stick with committees forever, it has an expiration date. To, to the extent, I think they lopped off one portion of what I had here. The, the committee itself, this is not what I originally gave them. Oh, here, it says, the, the committee itself, I allowed to stay in business until August thirty-first of 2019 because there may still be questions outstanding, but they need to have a report to us about what their recommendations are by May fifteenth of 2019, that's after town meeting. And they pretty much could look at anything, modes of transportation, bicycles, buses that might loop, which would utilize alternative parking lots. They're not being instructed on how they want to do, how they should operate, but they absolutely have to report back to us every sixty days so that we can see where they're heading, and the recommendation has to come to us by next year, the week after town meeting. Open to any questions, but I, as I said, I didn't want to make this thing so long that it would, you know, be ponderous or that they would constrict them in any way, but it is, it is a recognition that this is not a Harwich parking problem all year, everywhere, every day.
Okay, Larry?
Thanks, Don, for putting this together, it's well done. My question is, and you're probably, I'm probably violating some bylaw by, by this, but I wonder if this is a case where the identification of a resident should be broadened to include, you know, year-round, non-resident taxpayer type thing, because we, to encourage some, you know, creative ideas that people live here seasonally, they actually may be here when we have the most parking issues, rather than have it just be local residents, and I don't know if that violates some, this may be, I'm just saying, this may be an area that the broader opinion might have some merit.
I'm only smiling because you don't see per, uh, full-time or permanent resident anywhere in this thing, you see resident.
So, that opens that up...
I contemplate the fact that you might want the option of having somebody who is a non-resident taxpayer.
So, this local resident doesn't imply, uh, year-round or seasonal? Is, is that understood, or?
Not in my mind, but it still goes through the interview committee for recommendations, and they'd have to be vetted to make sure that they were...
Should that one statement be clarified then, so there's, it's understood?
If, if you'd like, I could do that, I just wanted to make sure that ultimately, whatever happened, is gonna be all-inclusive, that, that it's gonna go through the same vetting process, and I didn't want to hold this up forever either, I was waiting for the chair to come back, because this was ready a few weeks ago.
That'd be my desire, be sure that it's, it's opened up so we get the broadest...
So, we could say, we could, you know, revise it to say something to the effect of, you know, not to exclude...
Yeah, I'd be happy to...
Because it still goes through your committee, you're right.
Yeah, I'd have to, I'd be happy to create that language, and I was remiss, I should also say, I wanted to make sure that this was fairly neutral. I know the residents have a problem, they feel like there's a lot going on, and it's, and it's all a burden to them. But I also made sure that we pointed out that this is a golden goose thought, too. The businesses there are vibrant, the businesses there have been growing, and that is a thing that we are encouraging. There have been adjoining towns that had the center of town decay, it's really hard to bring a town back when that happens. In this, they're supposed to be looking at solutions that don't actually accrue negative...
That's obvious with the construct, I just had that one issue.
Yeah, and I, I will change that, if that's the board's...
Don, you really only need to get rid of three local residents and put three residents. But I think this is a can of worms, I, I don't know why we would change the policy now. You usually have to be a taxpayer to be on a committee, I don't know why we're, it's not a deal breaker for me, but...
No, neither.
Well, Larry had a good point, and that, that's the, the reason I'd be willing to do this, is because when they are having a problem, this is pretty much on the backs of people who are part-time residents, and come here, you know, during the summer, they're not seeing it when it's not an egregious problem.
Did you have another comment? Ed?
Well, um, it's, it's not necessarily that you need to be a taxpayer, you need to be a resident, not all residents of town are, are quote-unquote taxpayers.
Whatever you guys want.
So, I, my only que, and I like, I like this whole overview, I think it's excellent, and I thank you, Don, for putting the time and energy into it. My only question is, and I like the fact that we have to hear back, because to the point, you know, we missed opportunities this year, so my only other thing, and I get what you're saying about coming, having that meeting and the report back to us after town meeting, but I'm wondering if we have a proposed course of action, you know, let's just say even earlier, because we could miss the opportunity again.
No later than.
Okay, so no later than, okay. Just 'cause we don't want to miss an opportunity to address it. Money-wise?
If you will, I, I gave some thought to that, if there's an early recommendation, and let's say, for the sake of speculation, that we wanted to touch base with the RTA, that occasionally at night in the summer, or during the day, that we could run a loop to parking lots like the cultural center. You're gonna need some lead time to be able to get in tou, in touch with Tom Kehire to find out whether that's even possible. I'm okay with them coming up with recommendations sooner, but I also was worried that we have a tendency to drag things on here. So, there's two drop dead dates, there's, the committee goes away in Au, in the end of August next year, and they have to deliver a recommendation no later than May fifteenth. If they do it sooner, all the better.
Okay, Cindy?
Just a quick question, when is the interviewing gonna start, and when does the committee start? If we're gonna get this going, there needs to be some guidelines to when the next process is.
I expect that there are people watching tonight, but there's already been people, surprisingly enough, there've been people who put in for something that they don't even know that they're, what they're putting in for. We've got applications, but I, I thought it was important to have this as the guiding document.
Right, and that's perfect, and...
And we will start interviewing.
Great. The other thing, too, I know when we first started these conversations here, we had talked about it being a Harwich, granted, right now, this summer, we saw it more in Harwich Port, but there were some people that brought up that this should be a Harwich Parking Committee, because as we grow in Harwich Center, there're gonna be other issues that could happen up there. So, again, keeping it resident, not just saying non or whatever, remember, this is gonna be just the first beginning parts of getting this parking committee going, if that's what we're gonna go with.
So, meaning leave it at resident?
Mm-hmm.
Right, okay, so...
That's the way it's written, but I am interested in making sure, if there is something more global, we can bring it back, but, I mean, we gotta be able to take this step. There's several, we've talked about this over the last year, there's a whole bunch of committees where I know for a fact, and when we started them, we were contemplating them being for a few years, it'll get us off the ground with something and they'll go away, that's not happened. So, this one specifically has a beginning, a middle, an end, and if we got more interest in going into other parking issues, I'm certain that I can still write something for that.
And, and to your point, that I know you were leaving this, you know, generic in terms of the charge, and, you know, let the committee figure out, but hopefully, the committee will look at the, the two biggest issues we have, which, you know, really, our employee, well, there's multiple, but employee parking, beach parking, you know, Harwich Port stroll parking, that kind of stuff, and to, and...
I really wanted to write a charge, I didn't want to give them the road map to the conclusion.
Yeah, exactly, so, no, I think that's good to leave it generic, but those are, those are our major concerns that we, as a board, have discussed. Ed?
Madam Chair, I'd like to move that we approve the charges written and ask that people who are interested in serving on this committee have their applications into the selectman's office by May, September fifteenth.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any further discussion?
And you're saying again, as written allows us to get someone who's a resident.
Yep.
Michael?
I'd like to volunteer to be the liaison to this committee, that's the only comment.
That's excellent. Nothing more? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Perfect. Onto committee appointments, Historic District Historical Commission. Don?
Yeah, let's see here, trying to get this up to. I'd like to make a motion for three appointments. One would be Julia Eldridge for a full-term on the Historic District Historical Commission to expire six thirty twenty-one. An appointment for Steve Bellata to the Golf Committee for full-term to expire six thirty twenty-one. And for John Connolly to the Golf Committee for full-term to expire six thirty twenty-one.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We still have some vacancies on the Historical Commission, too. So, anybody would like to put in for it, we would be grateful.
Right, thank you, Don. The liquor, oh, sorry, you did Golf Committee. Liquor Entertainment License Violation, Mad Minnow Restaurant recommend referring this matter to hearing officer slash town administrator. Chris?
Just in the past, we have had some issues. The police do their due diligence, they see that there's potential violations, they alert the board. If the board thinks that there's enough substance to it, the board has, at least on two or three occasions, I think at the time I've been here, referred. I actually just conduct as a hearing officer, bring the two, bring the parties together, do a hearing, and then come back with recommendations for the board. So, I would, you know, if the board's comfortable with that, we could do that. If the board would like to do it itself, then we'll send notice, we'll have to schedule a formal hearing and give an opportunity for witnesses and so on to do the process with the board itself. So, in terms of that.
Just looking for direction.
Yeah, I'm looking for direction as to what approach you want to take.
Comments, questions?
I think that's the best process.
Yeah, I agree.
Ed? The process in terms of referring it on to?
Passing the buck.
Passing the buck, well, you know. I spent many years as a selectman dealing with and those complaints of the West Harwich establishment as part of our responsibilities as a licensing board. You know, ultimately, it's our decision, so.
Michael?
We don't have to agree with Chris's findings. We're asking him to have the hearing, rather than have the hearing be in here on a meeting night.
And that's been our process in the past. Chris has come back and then we've.
We still make the decision.
Right, we decide whether or not we're going to go forward with the public hearing or just take the recommendations, so. Okay, so, can I get a motion?
I move that we recommend referring this matter, the license violation, entertainment, liquor entertainment license violation of Mad Minnow Restaurant to the town administrator as the hearing officer.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Opposed.
Ed's opposed. Don didn't really get it.
That was an aye.
What?
That was an aye.
You or I, okay. Harwich Pines Association, application for special purpose mooring permits. Attorney Brian Wall, harbor master John Rendon. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, through you to the board. My name is Brian Wall, I'm the attorney of record in this matter. And this is an application for two special purpose mooring permits for the Harwich Pines Association. And we're before you because under the harbor management plan, you have authority to grant this type of permit. Briefly, I think my presentation will take less than five minutes, given the hour. The Harwich Pines Association is a homeowners association comprised of 14 residential properties located on a private way called Harwich Pines, which is adjacent to Long Pond. The association owns and maintains a common beach to which all the properties in the subdivision have deeded rights to. From the 1970s until 2002, the association was annually issued permits for two to three moorings off the common beach, and the population of the subdivision moored three to four boats there every year. The moorings were classified as private moorings under the Harwich Management Plan, which became in effect in 2004. In 2012, the harbor master, prior harbor master named Mr. Leach retired, and the new harbor master, Mr. Rendon, took over. And Mr. Rendon, as I understand it, did a comprehensive review of the regulations. And he wanted to make sure that he was being consistent in his application of the regulations and in his enforcement. And he determined that the association was not eligible for private moorings and asked that they be removed. And in 2012, the moorings were in fact removed, and they've not been back in the water since that time. The association owners were obviously a little bit upset by this. This is something that they traditionally enjoyed for many years with their families, access to the water, boating, tubing, fishing, et cetera. And so, they decided to pursue the matter, and they had meetings and correspondence with the harbor master. And the harbor master very politely explained, but firmly explained, that it was his position that under the regulations, specifically Section 3.9i, that the requirement that a private mooring have a residential property with waterfront, waterfront frontage or waterways frontage, meant that the waterfront property had to have direct access to the water and that deeded access by a backlot owner was not eligible. And he, again, Mr. Rendon respectfully said to the association, "If you disagree with my opinion, you can file an appeal." And so, they sought my advice, and in fact, we did in fact file an appeal, which is pending. But in the process of preparing that appeal, we comprehensively reviewed the regulations, and we saw the definition for special purpose mooring. And we felt that we actually fit within that definition. And as an alternative request for relief in my appeal, I asked for that type of permit. That apparently got the attention of the town, and the town administrator asked us to meet with him and with the harbor master, and we did. And I don't want to put words in the town's mouth, but we were informed that your town council agrees that we are in fact eligible for that permit. And we were asked to file a separate application for that, and we did that. And it's my understanding the harbor master has reviewed that, he's visited the beach, he agrees that he feels that the association is eligible for a special purpose mooring. And I think he's going to recommend approval. And with that, I conclude by simply saying, the association is essentially asking you to give them the two permits for moorings that they've enjoyed for 40-plus years with a different characterization as a special purpose mooring instead of a private mooring.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John is.
John is in the audience as the harbor master, I would like to have him comment.
Thank you. Good evening, John.
Good evening, John Rendon, harbor master. It's a good summary. I have had several conversations, several letters regarding private property moorings. I think the board recalls, you know, when I got here, one of the, I thought, problem areas was Long Pond. We have regulations in place, and yet, there was a whole lot of moorings that didn't belong. People just threw moorings in, people lived in Dennis, people lived in Yarmouth, people lived in Brewster, and, you know, people who had deeded beach rights, but not necessarily what our regulation says, which that is residential waterfront property. So, myself and my staff spent a couple of years really trying to get Long Pond cleaned up and enforce our regulations. And, you know, people with deeded beach rights don't, under the current definition, qualify for a private property mooring. And so, this new application was the first I heard from the Harwich Pines attorney when he wrote requesting a special purpose mooring. Special purpose mooring, just to, if I can, to remind the board what our regulation says regarding a special purpose mooring. A special purpose mooring granted to a yacht club or other business by the Board of Selectmen. The purpose for moorings are meant to promote water sports and boating education. It talks about what the fee is. Upon any change in ownership of the foregoing entity, the new entity may apply for the related mooring permits. However, control of the mooring does not automatically transfer. So, folks like Allen Harbor Yacht Club, Allen Harbor Marine, Pleasant Bay Community Boating, Stone Horse Yacht Club, those are the entities that currently have special purpose moorings awarded by the Board of Selectmen. And the whole idea is it's an entity that promotes water sports and boating education. And I think in the letter, as you've seen, the association, you know, they have applied for special purpose mooring. I think when myself and the town administrator met with town council, he felt based upon their nonprofit business-type entity of their association, he felt that they could apply. So, again, I did do a site visit, I think there's enough room there in front of their property for a special purpose mooring. It's a little bit outside the box of typically what we provide, what we define as special purpose. But I would support it. Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
I thank him.
Okay, any discussion? Michael?
I move that we approve the application for special purpose mooring permits by Harwich Pines Association.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion?
I just have a question for John, and that is, you've been, this took a different twist because when I read the document, it seemed like it was resting on the definition of a residential plot or not, so. I'd like to actually take it. Just in terms of access to the moorings, is there a, how's that work? Do association members use, trade off using moorings? Is there, can they get?
Well, they clearly have, excuse me, I'm sorry. They clearly have access. They have a beachfront, clear access by every member of their association has access to the beach.
So, they can get a boat there.
And they'll be able to swim out to their boat, and they can have a little dinghy on the shoreline to be able to access their boat. How they manage the two moorings, obviously, they have more than two homes, they may have, and maybe I'll let them speak to that. But, you know, we provide the permits, and they manage those two moorings.
They don't need to, you don't need to speak to it. I'll trust you to manage it.
Actually, the answer the harbor master gave is exactly what I would say, is that the association will have to manage that. They have had the moorings for many years, and it's never been a problem, there's never been a conflict. But as a nonprofit corporation, they have the authority to pass internal rules and regulations, and they'll have to live with that. They did have three or four moorings at times, and they understand that they're only going to have two at this particular time. And the president and treasurer are with me, if you have any questions, they're available.
I don't think.
I have no more.
Okay, Ed, Don, okay, so moved and seconded, all in favor?
I apologize, one question. How do we come up, and I guess it's probably an answer, a question for John. How do we come up with two if they traditionally had three or four? Is there a lack of space there?
Because that's how much space, I think, is, would allow for that.
Thank you, John.
Okay, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Onto the West Harwich School Building, general discussion of future plans for the site.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I put this on the agenda, and my first comment is, I want to postpone this till another meeting when we have time to discuss it. We're late in the evening. I put this on because, just very briefly, it came as a discussion point in one of the forums in town. It was a reasonable point of us, you know, we've spent money on it. You know, we should revisit this and see, I mean, Ed and I have been involved in going out at least twice in previous lifetimes to look at it. I'd like to, you know, there's been an issue of pollution, but that's changed a lot in the last few years. I know I reviewed that about a year ago, and the coordinated solvents that were concerned are basically down to background now, so I think that's much less an issue. I can share, I reviewed the report a year ago, and I'll share that with you while I was looking at it. You know, there's a very good chemical reductive decorination that's working well, getting that back to the background. There was, we looked at an RFP in the past for Bohazi, and that was mainly a question about density, you know, normal stuff on. I think I'd like to bring this back in a meeting or two, when I have more information that we should, because we spent money on it, it's just, it's just sitting there.
Okay, Michael?
I think there's some folks in the audience here tonight that waded through all of this to have at least something to say. You know, we did have two additional RFPs that went out after we found that the ground was clean enough to do something with, no responses whatsoever. But I would at least ask them if they want to speak because they came. And then if they're okay with it, then we table it until next.
And hold on one second, Sally, because I'm going to go to the other board members for us. So, Don and Ed, do you have any further comment before I go?
None, at this point.
As to what?
To any further discussion.
Yeah, in the future, when it gets put on the agenda, I'd like us to also think about the possibility of a licensing agreement, which we have not heretofore done, similar to the South Harwich Meeting House.
It is an important discussion. The timing was such that it was, I had asked to get some more information put on, it was too, we couldn't pull it together.
But I'm agreeing with Michael.
But I think we need to hear.
They've waited here patiently for hours.
I agree with that.
Okay, so, Sally, sorry for that interruption.
Thank you, I appreciate the opportunity to speak, and it won't be long. I just have to tell you that I did recently submit this building to Preservation Massachusetts' Most Endangered Historic Building list. It's a pretty comprehensive packet that you have to submit. And I don't know what our chances are, but I'm hopeful. And we do their statements, in case you don't know, they're a nonprofit. If we get help from them, it doesn't cost us anything. And the way I see it, we've been a pretty dysfunctional family with this building for so many years. Ed's put in stuff, I put in stuff, people have done lots of things, we haven't gotten anywhere. So, I figure we need a marriage counselor, and Preservation Massachusetts could do that for us. Here's their mission statement. Preservation is about more than just a building or a landscape. It's about relationships, about making the old new, it's relevant again, and connecting people to places. It's about recycling, upcycling, sustainability, breathing life back into our community centers and neighborhoods, and activating, I'm sorry, and activating and appreciation and pride in the place we call home. That's what we'd really like to go forward with. And we still have a very active Captain's Row group that still is looking to create a historic district in that area. So, we'd be very happy to work with whatever comes along.
Thank you, Sally.
Sally, could you forward that packet to Chris so we can put it in? You're submitted, give us a confirmation.
It's literally this thick, and part of it's on a thumb drive, I can send you, I can try and send it to you. I mean, I see what I can do.
I just want to be sure we have all the information when we get in our packet, when it comes up again.
Okay, I see what I can do, and you want me to try and get that to Chris?
Or an abbreviated summary.
I will try, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Sally. Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to speak to us? Leo?
I ask, I'll throw you, Madam Chair, to the previous speaker, just so I can understand the process. A non-owner and non-holder of any lease filed to have a town-owned piece of property accepted by some historical society without the permission of the town? You people didn't sign the documents asking for this? You were the owners? Is this a process that any citizen can do? And I guess through you, Madam Chair, to the speaker, just so I understand, can any individual, just driving down the street, nominate my home to this site without my knowledge of it? Could I ask that through you?
Sure. Chris and Sally can comment, do you have any comment on it? Okay, Sally?
Anyone can nominate it, it's purely collaboration. If the town does not want to take advantage of the listing, they don't have to. Anybody can nominate, yes.
Okay, thank you. So, we're going to bring this back?
Right.
Next meeting or the following, you'll let us know?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Larry.
I just want to be sure we have enough for a good discussion.
Okay, thank you, so we'll bring that back.
Bob Doyle on North Road, I know it's a late hour. The, this is a jewel, and, you know, we've all struggled with it to try to figure out what is the best use? How do we maintain it, how do we take care of it? How do we take care of it? How do we develop a future use that makes sense to the town and, you know, to the citizens of the town? But to destroy it, I think would be a major mistake. Relocate it, I think would be a major mistake because it belongs to Harwich. It doesn't belong to Harwich Center, it doesn't belong to Harwich Port or whoever. So I think it behooves all of us to put our heads together. There's been a lot of work done, a lot of conversations, but we're not there yet by a long way. So we're going to need support. And I know it came up for a vote before and lost by a very small margin on the funding for the $203,000. So I hope we can come to a good conclusion on this that will benefit the town and the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll bring that back. Entertainment licenses, discussion on outside noise after 10:00 PM.
Well, being it's almost 10.
Okay, so who wants to have any further? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
All right, okay. I'm Taylor Powell, Taylor Powell, owner of Perks, well, joint owner, my wife next to me here, Sarah. I guess I was here a couple of weeks ago for approval for something else and I brought up a topic and I'm glad to hear that you guys put it on the agenda for tonight. So I guess it is some confusion on my part and I'm sure on every licensee's part. You guys worked really hard, did a great job of getting these, the verbiage and adapting into noise bylaw. And I think all the restaurants, including the minnow and everybody else, are doing their best to comply with the rules set forward in the license. However, the way all those licenses are worded, it leaves the licensee holders open for a violation after the music stops. And I'm going to explain why. If you have 10 o'clock outside, that's what everyone was agreed upon. But then you also put in midnight or an hour before the serving stops. All the alcohol licenses go to 1:00 AM in town. So if you're an indoor place, for example, at midnight, there's no place, I mean, I bet my bottom dollar, there's no place that at midnight turns all their TVs off, turns the light background music off and just, the whole place would clear out and they don't do that. So I'm sure they stop their live music at midnight, but something might be going soft in the background. But the way the permit is written, that would be a violation. Same for me. So if I had something light where you could barely hear it, it wasn't plainly audible, I tried to look at the minutes, I tried to look at all the discussions that were had about this. And what my opinion and what I gathered from it was that it couldn't create a nuisance outside the premises. So you could have, the music obviously has to stop at this time, but carrying forward until you close, as long as you're not creating a nuisance, no matter what the noise is, people talking, people screaming, people having a good time, light background music, a TV, whatever it may be, that that was okay as long as it did not create a violation. And furthermore, there are establishments that don't hold an entertainment license in town and they could play their music and their TVs and everything else without any violations whatsoever because they don't hold that license. So there's some gray areas kind of on both sides of this. And I just think there needs to be some clarifications. I mean, we're working hard to make sure we do this right. I mean, we've all seen the changes in town in a positive way. And I really think that I'm a small piece of that pie, as is Mike from the mad minnow behind me. You know, these outdoor establishments, people want to be outside in the season, this whole parking issue. We're a small piece of that because we created something that brings people in. And we don't want to be penalized for it. So hopefully with the hearing for the minnow, obviously, hopefully take it easy because I know this guy well and I know he's doing a great job. Just a couple more things, you know, like a Red Sox game, right? So my music permit stops at 10, but everybody's watching the game. I can't have any volume on on the game because now I'm in violation. Or Patriots game, or something like that. So this is this little gray area I was talking about. I'm sure everybody in the room wants to watch the Sox game. I mean, or a Patriots game, I do, that's just like me. But again, you know, what we thought when we did all this, you know, back in 2016 and the Board of Selectmen agreed upon was that noise shouldn't be heard plainly audible outside the boundaries of the premise itself after the live music stops. Now I'm told you can't have anything and it's all a violation. So historically for years, this was okay. This was always okay, it was never a problem. Now it seems to be a problem. And I just want to know why or if there's a way where we can either reward it or work with enforcement so everybody's on the even playing field and we can't have people in jeopardy of a violation. I mean, if I wanted to, I could call any one of those bars or the officers and waste their time at 12:01. They'd walk into any bar and they'd get a slap for having light music on or any kind of noise other than the live music. And that's what I'm here to talk about.
Thank you, thank you. We appreciate your time and we would agree that, you know, your businesses are bringing a lot to Harwich Port and we certainly all, I think, pretty much can all say we frequent them. So we do appreciate it and we appreciate your participation with the parking issues that we face going forward. Don?
Madam Chair, might I suggest in addition to the fact that there's other things at the chair's discretion, having recently re-entered the country, might wish to put off. We're going to need a public hearing to do anything with this. There are licenses that are subordinate to the policy and I see no point in going on much further with the discussion other than to say that we want to have a discussion and we would like to bring it back as a public hearing.
Yeah, I think, is there any, go ahead, Michael.
If I may, I'd like to just hear from the police chief on this, what his thoughts are. Because I do think when we change that policy to the 10 o'clock, I think this is something that we overlooked because the light background noise, I frequent these establishments and after the band stopped playing and the 10 o'clock thing stops, the conversation is louder than back music. So I'd like to get the chief's thoughts.
Madam Chair, Dave Kilmatt, Chief of Police.
Good evening.
Just as a side note, I'm actually surprised, this being on the agenda, that the number of complaints that we've had, there aren't more people here. But that being said, just to answer Taylor's question, and I attempted to do this at the last meeting when this came up first. What he's getting at is the differences in licenses. If it's an inside entertainment license, yes, the board voted midnight, which I think is extremely reasonable. Because we have had establishments out of control at 1:00 AM and we've had to go in and try and get everybody out. The 12 o'clock stop time on inside entertainment is to help us get those establishments staying within control and then get everybody out by 1:00 in an orderly fashion. That was the idea and the discussion when we changed that regulation. Those inside establishments, it says right on that entertainment license, noise not to exceed the premises. Now, a Red Sox game inside at any one of the restaurants or pubs or whatever is not going to be a violation because all the doors are closed, nor is background music. However, unfortunately, if you are strictly an outside entertainment venue, you have no inside venue. You are then held to the 10 o'clock stop time, right? And you have no, you have no noise not to exceed the premises. It's all stop at 10. And anything heard beyond that, beyond the premises, is a violation. That's the way I'm seeing it. Am I explaining it correctly?
Well, so if I remember the discussion previous when we went around on our 10 o'clock, it was for the outdoor entertainment, right? And that ultimately the indoor entertainment to that point was not to exceed the premises.
Correct.
So in a discrepancy situation, I guess I'm a little bit confused in the sense, to your point, a Red Sox game or a Patriots game or conversation, as long as it's within the walls of the building, shouldn't be a violation unless.
Right, and personally, I'm no attorney.
Or the property, right.
But a Red Sox game, in my personal opinion, does not fall under the entertainment license anyway. It's just something that's going on inside the premises. It's entertainment, it's live or recorded music. That's what it states on the license.
But if the, my understanding based on our vote was that if that music, if it was background music and it did not exceed the premises.
For an indoor venue.
The property, the walls, then that was allowed.
That's what I thought. For an indoor venue under the entertainment license that stops at midnight, correct?
No, outdoor, chief.
Outdoor. If it does not exceed the premises, the out?
If it doesn't exceed the premises, meaning, no.
All live or recorded music, under the current regulation, as I understand it, for the out, for an outside venue, has to stop at 10. So anything heard, right, outside.
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 But within the walls of the building, within the property, we did not say that the, you could have the music on inside. That doesn't mean it could extend to the outside.
But like, take Taylor, take Perk. Can they have outdoor, live, recorded music, soft recorded music after 10 o'clock?
Outside?
Yeah.
No.
Not according to the current conditions.
Not according to the way we voted it.
So I guess that's the question. If it's not exceeding the property, what's the difference between light recorded music and a whole bunch of conversation? And is that something we want to revisit?
That's why we need a public hearing.
Well, yeah, I agree. I think we should bring it back because to your point, I mean, I guess there is confusion out there. But the way we originally voted it was if it was inside, it could go till midnight. If it was outs, if you're saying, if the question is if people are sitting outside and having conversation and the music's shut down and we have, now we have a noise complaint because people are talking, that's another piece. But if we're sitting outside and there's light music playing outside, that's not what we voted before. We did a lot, we did say that it had to stop at 10.
Yeah, by strict definition, that's.
Yeah.
And I understand what you're saying. The noise from people can drown out any soft background music. I clearly agree that. But we also get complaints on noise from people. And I could go on and on. So this issue is not going to go away.
Right.
Based on the complaints. And I have the numbers to back it up. But we can save that for the public hearing.
Yeah, well, I think Don's, you know, point of bringing back for a public hearing is real. And I also think we need to comment that, you know, we're talking about two months out of the year, so it's not.
It's almost tense to keep it down.
Chief, if you would, would you forward those numbers to the town administrator so he can forward them to the board?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Let's see, one thing real quick, you can say something, if you'd like. This is Sarah, Sarah Powell, my wife.
Hi, Eric.
But, real quick, the line drawn between live music and what I'm speaking of are just black and white, two different things. Obviously that live music stops. If the treatment and the license holder that has an indoor place, I mean, they have that luxury that we don't have. But they're also, we should be confined to the same verbiage and laws, that the noise doesn't exceed the property. So we could still have soft music that can't be heard when you walk down the street.
Right, when you walk down the.
Just as you would inside, it doesn't go outside, it'd be the same.
I understand that, and I understand that there seems to be like a.
Otherwise, we should shut down at 10 because the place will just clear out.
It does, I've seen it happen, I've watched us lose business over it.
And we have, we have three more hours to go and it's, you know, and we've proven, at least this summer, that we played by the book and we can manage the noise levels and everything else.
But to your point, I think there is some, you know, difference in opinion on outside, soft music.
And can I just say, for the amount of complaints that I'm sure the chief is getting, I bet I have more people who come up to us daily and thank us for what we've done for the town. And I'm sure if we were to put a petition together, the number of praise would far exceed the number of complaints. And that's something I'd be willing to do.
Okay, thank you. Chris, you had a comment?
It was just as a business owner, if they would, if they had something in mind that they would like to see the board change the policy on or these license requirements, if they could submit something so that we give some direction for the board in terms of what they would like to see.
Yeah, I think that's fair.
Yeah, that would be great if you would forward that. Thank you.
I thank all of you, appreciate it.
Thank you, appreciate it. Okay. Good luck. Old business. Continuation of the CVEC round one adder for FY 2020, Liz Argo. Good evening, Liz.
Hi there, it's Liz Argo, manager of CVEC. I have a really long PowerPoint I'd like to put up. You guys all have.
See ya.
I hope you enjoy it.
Turn the lights off, would you?
Yeah, us saying in the background though. You all saw the pretty picture, it was in your board package. I won't go over it, just to say that we in 2019 have a whole lot of good stuff coming up. We're doing a battery backup system at DUI High School for their emergency shelter. We hope to do a microgrid out at the Oak Plus landfill that would power the wastewater plant on the property. And we are looking to do CVEC community solar, which ties in perhaps with your as-of-right sighting next to the transfer station. Don't know if that would work, but I would remind you that in the past, CVEC has run your requests for proposals and we've done a pretty good job. So I hope you'll keep us in mind when you do start thinking about developing that property. The bottom of that pretty page, it says round one adder request for FY 18 and FY 19 was a half a penny to cover a debt with CVEC of $100,000. So we didn't have a round one adder, just to go back to repeat the history. We had to come to you because we realized we weren't paying the bills maintaining the round one projects. So we came back and that round one adder was approved at a half a penny for two years. We've done our future projections for FY 20 and we've done a really good job at tightening our belt and finding new projects. And we are now back with a projected debt of $36,000, down from $100,000. And we would therefore only ask you for a quarter of a penny for the round one adder. And the natural next question is, what is that going to mean to us? The town of Harwich took in $364,920 in FY 17 and that you would pay out $8,981. And I shouldn't even say pay out, you wouldn't receive that portion. You get cash, your cash would be less that almost $9,000 amount. So it's about a 2% piece of what you're bringing in. I also passed out your participant report for FY 18, had off the press. And I would just point out that you're consistently producing very well. The site is producing as we would hope it would. And you have earned in FY 18, your net benefit was $371,925. So you, this system is definitely a boon to the town of Harwich. And that includes not only what you take in, but the off-takers are sending you back in net metering credits. I just wanted also to mention that when we are talking about community solar and what you might do for future development, keep in mind that the net metering credit appetite for public municipalities and water districts and water departments is pretty well-filled. So as you go forward in developing PV, you're going to have to think hard about where you're going to market your net metering credits. But at any rate, so those are the two presentations. Questions on it?
Anyone have any questions? Don? Ed? Larry? Can I get, oh, sorry, Leo?
Oh, and by the way, Larry Cole has been absolutely fantastic. So if Larry wants to say something, please, and I know, and Leo, of course, is our president and they have been, they're the backbone of CVEC there, fantastic.
They are, we would agree.
We're entertaining, to say the least.
I believe you guys are working together.
I didn't say we're working together, I said we're entertaining. Right, Larry? Larry's moving, by the way, and I'm going with him.
Now you are. Okay, which one of you is the straight man?
I just, I just want to stand up really and thank you, board, for standing up in the last two times that we came forward and asked for a round one adder. I won't get into the history as Liz just hit on it very briefly. The contracts did not allow us to charge anything or CVEC to charge anything for many years. And, you know, as we looked at the budgets and looked at the projections, it was obvious that we were going to spend whatever savings we had. And you and the other round one towns stepped up and agreed to pay the half cent adder. We are before you this evening and we hope that you will vote to support the 25 cent adder for FY 20. But I just wanted to say one thing also, that in FY 19, with your half cent adder, CVEC stepped up to the plate and spearheaded the lawsuit, if you will. I'm not sure if it's an actual suit that we did, but the rate case that went on for some time. And we represented all our participants, including the town of Harwich. And the bill for that was in excess of about 35 grand. And we took that hit and we took that hit for all our participants and members. Had we not taken that rate case on and had we not spent that money, we probably would not be asking for the quarter cent adder in FY 20. But we did that and we saved the town, especially the town of Harwich, because you guys are a large participant here. We saved you an incredible amount of money in that rate case. The other members, maybe not so much, to all of you, because. value, because it's all based on, again, what they're producing and stuff, but Harwich is a large producer. So, good came out of that, we won, we're happy with the outcome. I shouldn't say we won, because winning would have been to have no rate at all, but we certainly came out in a positive manner. And you also came out in a positive manner, being a member. So, with that said, again, I hope that you would make a motion to support, as we go forward to putting our FY 21, FY 20, I mean, in place. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I would move that we support the Round One adder request for fiscal year 20 at a quarter cent.
Per kilo-what-hour.
Per kilo-what-hour.
Second.
Second. It's been seconded, any further discussion?
Just, just very, I don't want to get a long discussion, but just very briefly, what's the projection going forward in the future years? Do you see this flattening off, or do you see this, you know, like 2%, 3% each year coming up?
It depends so much on a couple of projects that we have in the works. And we hope it's going to slack off, and in hope, we also hope that we're going to have some excess revenue. And that's one reason we're looking at the bylaws this fall, at the annual meeting, because we need to determine if we do have excess, how do we divvy it up? Because that's critical to all the towns, so. But, so we can't answer that yet, Larry, it's too early. But, you're going to keep getting reports. I know Larry Cole is excellent at coming in, and we will have our annual report in your hands, at the end of September. And monthly reports on your Harwich report, your net metering credit reports for the landfill. And he'll, if it's not Larry, then it'll be the next appointee from Harwich, and we'll come back and say, guess what, we did it, we got this project going forward, we're going to have this kind of revenue. And then you'll, you'll know better, but we just don't have anything like that yet.
Thank you, Liz. Okay, so it's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye. Madam Chair, could I ask that we delay the fraud risk assessment policy, until we have the whole board here?
Sure. I'm okay with that. Chris?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Except I feel bad for Kevin.
I get that, but I don't, I have a discussion, and I don't want to do it.
Okay, all right. So, we'll bring that back, next week?
September 4.
September 4.
Well, we're back to weekly meetings.
Okay, so that, that's been tabled till 9:04. Overview of land use controls for wastewater purposes?
I think I'll ask that that be delayed too, until we can have that via more...
And I would agree with that. Can I, Chris, though, ask on the line, use control? I'll send you some comments, I have some questions on...
Probably good.
Pardon?
Give them to them before the next meeting.
Yeah, give them to them before the next meeting, and...
I'll email them to you tomorrow.
Well, hold it, right. Okay, so you'll email the question you have to Chris, and we'll bring that back next meeting, next meeting, right?
Yep.
Okay, Sunday opening for community center update.
At the, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, at the last board meeting, there was a request for a status report, in terms of opening for Sunday. Again, I had expressed my apologies that we didn't. According to the budget that we had available, we, actually, we did have a meeting, just Carol, Carolyn from Community Center Director, DVW Director, and Recreation, established, based on the budget that was submitted and passed, that we had sufficient funds for opening on Sunday from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. I think this was kind of consistent too, with how Chatham, they're only open for a certain number of hours. We did look at the calendar, or Carolyn looked at the calendar. We do have several events coming up. One significant one being, obviously, the election is actually the day before Labor Day, yeah, the day before Labor Day, or the day after Labor Day, sorry. So, we have to set up for that. So, in terms of, we're looking at trying to open up the new hours for Sunday, September 23, 2018. We will have to advertise, is in total, four part-time positions that we would need to recruit for. You know, and the second part, I'm a little uncomfortable about making determination as to what are soft holidays versus harder holidays. You know, the three that I would kind of lead towards is Labor Day, Columbus Day, and President's Day, although in the eyes of, obviously, the law, all the holidays are equal, equal in terms of that, but just to that end. And because Labor Day is, has other activities, we're unable to do that this year. So, we're looking at Columbus Day in October, and President's Day in February. So, just to give a sense to what we're thinking about, in terms of those soft openings. I don't know if there's any board action, I think I was just requested to provide an update on that, but...
Any discussion? No?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Contracts, change order number two, CC Construction for the Sacotucket Harbor Septic System project, in the amount of $86,809.
So, thank you, Madam Chair. It is a little late, and I don't know, me, I'm just a little, getting a little silly, but I believe what we're trying to do here, I was trying to get in hold of the engineer today, I did not. But, we had deferred, the town meeting, we had approved for the construction through Eastward of doing the snack shack, so we did the snack shack. We wanted to be able to go through and revise the bids on the septic system for the snack shack. That's what you have before you this evening, this $86,000, $86,890 is a change order, obviously above the $50,000 threshold that the administrator has, to construct the tanks, in order to get the restaurant going. You'll see on the detail, that we did have out of here, $36,200, which was the pipe material to the maintenance garage. We had hoped that we could do that internally, we have not, we've decided not to do it internally. There has been some design changes to the system, and at the back, we do anticipate a change order from Eastward Company, to have Brian Barrows Company do some of the work, to install the septic tank, to run the line, and so on. That price came in at $24,970. Obviously, that is within the $50,000 of the administrator. I just wanted to disclose that, if the board votes the $86,890, it would be my intent to vote, to authorize the $24,970, so that way, this will give authority to get that project done. We hope to have this done a little bit sooner, but with the summer, with the work going on, we took a little bit more time. The bottom line is, we did save some money, not as much as I had hoped, but we did wind up saving some money by doing this. And we're waiting for the season to kind of end, so this work will commence probably, you know, middle to end of September, probably closer to Columbus Day in October.
Okay. Ed?
Chair, I'd like to move approval of a change order, request an amount of $86,890.
For?
For CC Construction.
Yes.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any further discussion?
Chris, just to confirm, this falls within the appropriation of town meetings for this project?
Yes, and we do, we're still on track to potentially turn back, I believe, about $200,000 is the estimated amount.
John?
If I may, Madam Chair, that's correct, it's well within, you know, we're currently projecting ahead, like town administrator said, we hope to turn back about $200,000 of the million grant that we got. So, and just one clarification, just because I know there was some discussion earlier about there not being a toilet in the garage, and we weren't going to put in a septic. There absolutely is, it always was planned for, we were delaying it, because we had some unknown on who was going to do the work. About 1,000 gallon tank with a pump will be piped to the, to the leach field, there will be a bathroom there in the workshop.
Thank you, John.
And this is all, again, within the appropriation.
Leo, did, Leo, did you have a?
No, he answered it.
Okay, great. So, no further discussion, so it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Town Administrator's report.
Yeah, I will make this, I'll make this brief. In terms of just a couple of items, we did receive the resignation of the Council on Aging Director. She had, came to us from the town of Orleans, I think she's done an outstanding job. I think unfortunately, sometimes people realize that they left a pretty good gig, and the money was a little bit better in terms of our pay scales, our pay scales kind of work. We were competitive, but it takes a while to be in the system for it to be competitive. And sometimes, it doesn't work for people. So, she was with us for about a year. According to the charter, in the absence of a department head, the administrator gets to fill in. Because I did it before, I'm not going to, I'm not going to have Evan try to do it, but I will go back down, that's my intent, to manage that again. Hopefully, last time I was able to do it, complete the process within 90 days, so that will be my, my goal again, to see if we can complete it, within that timeline. Also, just on the housing trust, I just want to put out a call for kind of additional volunteers and members to apply. You know, we have everything ready to go, we have three people out of the five that are slated, but we do need two more folks for the interview committee to be able to put on, so we can have a full board. I know that the CPC had asked for an update, so I'm planning on going to their meeting in September, and would love to report that we have a full board, and, you know, activity will commence shortly.
Excuse me, Tom.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'm leaving you speechless. I do want to be able to make a comment to the general public, though. To a certain degree, we've been getting a lot of applicants who were essentially within the same circle. I mean, people from the planning board, and what we were trying to do with this, is get this somewhat outside of that, because the planning board and other places are going to have their opinions heard anyway. So, don't be put off by the fact, if you're sitting at home, and you care about affordable housing, but you're like, I haven't been on the ZBA, I haven't been on the planning board. Don't be put off by that. We're really interested in getting some new people involved, so put in an application.
Very true, we need volunteers, so...
And then just the, the last item I have on here, is CDM Smith progress reports for the sewer collection system fees too. Obviously, folks probably are aware that we are continuing to do the boring samples there, digging into the ground to see the profile of the subsoils, to make sure that we can install the pipes. I have also gone out with the engineer, we took some time to look at specific pump station locations, so we are trying to refine those locations, to have that get squared away. I think we wound up looking at about three, and that ran out of time, and we had a deluge, so that kind of prevented fieldwork. But, so we will continue that, that effort. But just wanted to give people a little bit of a progress report on that status. And that concludes my comments this evening, Madam Chair.
Chris, one comment on the pump stations. Is Dan also involved in those, the reviews?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. And are we tabling, we all selected?
Yeah, I would ask that you put that on as a real agenda item. What I'm looking for is what obligations we have, in any paper that might show that, and what alternatives we might wish to consider.
Okay, so we'll put that on...
So, we're blowing by that.
Okay.
Tonight.
So, we'll put that on the future, whether it be the next meeting, or the following meeting. Okay. So, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Select those boards ourselves.
Oh, sorry.
I have, I got nothing, but I thought somebody might.
Trying to ignore that.
Shut up, Ed.
Ed, you got anything to report?
I'm done.
Oh, I, I do want to say that...
Welcome back to Ireland.
Thank you, it was a great trip. I do want to remind everybody that Cindy Williams was before us earlier tonight, speaking about the big fix, that, you know, Harwich has been lucky enough to be nominated, and we have 17 families, and we have a need for volunteers, we have a need for teams, or people to make donations, which they can do directly by going to the Chamber of Commerce website, and it's a great event, and I want to make sure that I get the date right, which I believe is September 22nd.
22nd.
Right, and the times are from 8:00 to 2:00, I believe. So, if everybody could remember that, and the Cranberry Festival Committee's concert, which is Thursday night.
Yep, Thursday night.
Thursday night. And that's it, that concludes our meeting.
Move it, Jen.
Move it, Jen.